Vice Chair of the Board is sitting to my right. Just a reminder, in the event of a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber, through the doors behind you and move for the reception into the front car park and wait there for further instructions. Welcome to the following executives and executive support councillors who are attending our meeting today. We have councillor Michael Cheen, councillor Steve Clegg, councillor Natalie Oliver. I believe that's all we've got. Tom Catton.
Don't forget Tom.
Oh, Tom. Tom Catton. Sorry, Tom, didn't see you there. Rose between two thorns. And we also have members of the Adult Care and Public Health Committee today. I would like to welcome Debbie Barnes, council's chief executive, and other officers who will be introduced when we reach their item. Streaming arrangements. Can I remind you that the meeting is being broadcast live and your comments will be accessible online as recording remains on the council's website? With this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and press watching this live. Devices. I can remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent. Also, when invited to speak, please can you switch on your microphone and also speak directly into the microphone as you can be heard? The hearing loop is now activated. Speaking etiquette. Request to speak will be collated by vice chairman. If you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand and the vice chairman will make a note. We will now move on to the formal agenda. Apologies for absence and replacement members. Emily, do we have any apologies or replacement members?
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from Paul Brewster.
Thank you. Declarations of interest. Do we have any members who wish to declare an interest? That's a no. Agenda item three. Minutes of the meeting held on the 26th of June. This is to confirm and sign the minutes from the meeting on the board of the 26th of June 2025 as a correct record. They can be found in pages seven to 14. Do we have a proposer? I'll propose. Okay, second. We will now vote on the minutes. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? I believe those meetings are carried. Those minutes are carried. Minutes of the meeting held on the 21st of August last week. This is to confirm and sign the minutes from the extraordinary meeting of the board held on the 21st of August as a correct record. These minutes are circulated separately on an email on Tuesday, the 26th of August. I'll propose.
I'm happy to second chair.
Excellent. We will now vote on these minutes.
Chairman, I think there have been some, I'm aware, there have been some challenges on the accuracy of the said minutes. I just wondered if we could just discuss that.
I believe you might have been emailed with the answer to those. Is that right, Nikki?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. To summarise, I received in advance of this meeting, and I really do appreciate the suggestions of the minutes to be submitted in advance, the opportunity to consider those amendments in advance of the meeting. And I have reviewed the footage from those amendments. I just wanted to just put some clarity to members on formal committee minutes so that they understand that they're not verbatim record. They summarise key points and formal resolutions are recorded within those meetings that are created from the discussions that arise that are proposed within the meeting. We don't actually include every comment that a member might make in a meeting or any interjections that come forward, and all the debates that take place in meetings are summarised. And therefore, the points that were made in the amendments that were submitted before the meeting don't meet that in the opinion of officers, and therefore Democratic Services did not accept the amendments that were put forward in advance of the meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Therefore...
It does seem to be a bit of a, it sort of reads like verbatim, but it's not quite. I accept what's been said, but I did make the point that there was a statement made in, I think it was the fourth bullet point, about the fact that the road in question, you could offset the cost of removing the material. Well, that was clearly established at the meeting. That was an incorrect statement. So are we going to allow an incorrect statement to carry forward into the minutes? My personal view is that that comment should just be removed altogether about the material being removed. I weigh your advice.
My apologies. I don't have that amendment in front of me that was not submitted to me.
Sorry, there was. Democratic Services, where I did email Democratic Services yesterday as well as...
My apologies. My response is into the two comments that were made by councillor Davies.
So the issue is, the bullet point in the second part of the meeting, which refers to the cost of the road, there is a statement where it says the cost of that road can be offset by not having to remove the material. That's an incorrect statement, because if you don't build the road, you then don't have to remove the material. So the cost of 67,000 estimated should stand, in my opinion, and you can't then deduct another item of it. So in my view, that's an incorrect statement, and I think that should be removed as such.
Chair, I wouldn't be able to comment on the accuracy of that technical point. I think that would be a matter for officers to revise.
Well, we have officers here. We actually have an officer here who could help us.
Morning, all. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to be calling quite soon.
Morning, Sam. Could you answer that question, Sam?
Yes, I can. So there is truth in what's been said, so that the 67,000 to install the track is what it costs. What we explained in the paper and in the conversations is that by leaving the track in place, we're not having to add additional cost by taking it away. So the other way to look at this is, if those savings weren't in place, it would have been a greater cost than 67,000. So we've been able to limit it back to 67,000. So it's not a case that the savings offset against the 67,000. It would have been, I don't know, 100,000 if we hadn't had those savings.
That is correct, but that's not what the minutes say. They said offset.
Thank you, Sam. I think the minutes aren't a matter of debate, as Nikki has said, that not every single comment is put in, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm questioning the accuracy of the minutes.
Chairman...
So what Sam has just said is quite correct. So the cost is 67,000, including not having to remove the material. So you can't then take away the removal of the material from the 67,000.
Sorry, I can understand what councillor Hill is saying. So I think in terms of subject to what's voted here at the committee, I think then what we're saying is that there is an amendment to change the minutes to remove that comment. But all of the other comments have been dealt with through Nikki's response.
Okay, I move that that comment is removed from the minutes. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? We have one. I believe that's passed. So therefore... The amendment is moved. Now, we'll vote on the amended minutes. So with that removed, I move that, those in favour of the minutes, with that removed? Those against? Any abstentions? One. That's fine. Therefore, those minutes are moved with that removed. Okay, on to agenda five. Chairman's announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and chief officers. Chairman's announcements have no announcements to make at this stage. Just that we have a long agenda today, so I request that presenters keep their report introductions as brief as possible, and also request all members to be to the point with the questions and statements. Executive councillor announcements?
None from me, thanks.
No, none at all. That's great, okay. Chief officer announcements? Are there any chief officer announcements from Debbie Barnes, chief executive?
Nothing from me, thanks very much, Chair.
Thank you. Consideration of any call-ins? Emily?
No, none received, Chairman.
Consideration of any councillor calls for action?
None received.
None received. Agenda eight. Integrated Lifestyle Service Consultation and Contract. This pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages 15 to 27 of our agenda pack. The report outlines the proposed plans for the Integrated Lifestyle Service contract. The executive is due to consider the report for a decision on the 2nd of September. I would like to welcome members of the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee who are in the chamber or online for the consideration of this item. We also have present the executive councillor for adult care and health, councillor Steve Clegg. This report will be presented by Martin Samuels, executive director of Adult Care and Community Wellbeing. Right, okay. The members of the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee, as a dispensation, will allow you to obviously ask questions. However, you will not be allowed to vote. Over to Martin Samuels, executive director.
Thank you, Chair. I'll take notice of your comments earlier and try to make my introduction as brief as I can. So the county council receives a ring-fenced grant from the Department of Health and Social Care for services which are focused on improving the health and wellbeing of residents. It's a total of about 39 million pounds in the current financial year. Some services are prescribed. We have to provide certain services, but the large majority of the funding is available for the county council to decide what it should most appropriately be spent on. This county council, like all other councils, is under budgetary pressure, and therefore we need to make sure that the available funding is used to have the greatest positive effect for Lincolnshire residents. The Integrated Lifestyle Service provides a range of lifestyle services associated with healthy weight, smoking cessation, physical activity, sensual alcohol consumption and some others. We spend about 2.7 million pounds of the public health grant on that service. In addition, the NHS provide a further half a million because of the positive impact on people who are awaiting surgery of weight management services. And then we also use the Integrated Lifestyle Service as the vehicle for about 1.1 million pounds of smoke-free generation funding that we additionally receive from the government. The contract for the current service is due to end very shortly, and this seems therefore a good opportunity to review whether the Integrated Lifestyle Service, in the way that it has been delivered for the last few years, whether that is the best way to spend the available funding. And therefore, the proposal in front of you is to run a public consultation to gather the views of Lincolnshire residents about their priorities for where funding should be spent to improve health and wellbeing and their experience of the Integrated Lifestyle Service. And that would support a decision by the executive in February of next year about the longer term future for these services. In order to allow time for the public consultation, for the executive to take a considered view and then for the consequences of whatever might be decided by the executive in February of next year, to allow time for all of that to happen, the report therefore requests a one-year direct award to the current provider to maintain the existing service, essentially carrying on as we are, so that there is time for that public consultation and review to take place.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, I'd like to welcome members of the adult, hold on. I'd like to know about members of the board and members of the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee to make any relevant statements and ask any questions. Do we have any questions? Councillor Lee.
Thanks, Chair. I don't normally come to this committee because we don't have a place on it, but I'm pleased to have been able to come today and speak. Thank you. Thank you particularly to Rob Gibson for allowing that to happen. As well as a nurse, I'm sure people know I'm a former healthcare professional. I was a cardiac nurse for 21 years, as well as a councillor. And I want to speak about the proposals, which ultimately mean to cut some public services, should that consultation have the result that, I would imagine, is being looked for, but simply by going out to consultation on it. I do understand that councils are under financial pressure, and you only had to look at the BBC yesterday, right across the country, that they're under financial pressure. But I would implore the controlling group here that if indeed cuts do have to be made, please don't make them here. This is absolutely the wrong place. There's a multitude of evidence around health prevention being money well spent. Preventable ill health costs the NHS 11 billion per year. And there was a really good paper went to executive last December, which identified that the return on investment for the Integrated Lifestyle Service was £4.26 for every pound spent. I hope I've read that properly, but it outlined the value of this service. Since 2019, the service has delivered 10,000 successful outcomes, and those are the financial statistics. Preventable ill health ultimately cuts the lives of Lincolnshire's population short. So that's the cost in human terms. And you know what? People who become ill younger, they need the support of our social services care team, whether that's daily visits to their home or ultimately going into care homes. So actually, cutting this isn't even going to be cost effective in the long run. Health research has found that 70% of heart disease can be prevented, along with 40% of cancers, 40% of dementia, 40% of chronic respiratory disease and 99% of type 2 diabetes. So the prevention measures to address the four key risk areas this service does, there's smoking, excessive alcohol consumption, physical activity and unhealthy weight, they all mean that both the prevalence of those diseases and the progression of them is addressed by the Integrated Lifestyle Service. So I want to make two really important points today, because this is just really a starter for 10, isn't it? Firstly, there's been absolutely no proper scrutiny of these proposals. They're being rushed through. They should have gone to adult scrutiny, but we're told we can come here today and we can talk, but we can't vote. So I don't think that that's proper scrutiny. And I think that given the scope and potential impact of the proposals, there should be close scrutiny by the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee to identify the impact on communities across the county should those cuts go ahead. Impact assessments are a regular thing that happen. And there should also be work done by the Health Scrutiny Committee to identify the likely impact on other health services, once the loss of the preventative measures starts to manifest as ill health. That will obviously put a bigger strain on GP services right across the county. And the second thing, the Integrated Lifestyle Service covers a wide range of provision. It includes help for families who are on a tight budget to eat healthily. And I've heard a comment that, do we really want to give people a free Slimming World contribution? You know, do we want to pay for that for free? It really is not just about that. It is so much more than giving people free Slimming World. It gives people advice about exercise regimes, how to become and keep fit. And a really important one for me as a cardiac nurse, day two after an MI, a heart attack, we'd go to patients, the ones that smoked, and we'd talk to them about smoking cessation. We'd make sure they had the medications to help with that. A large proportion of them gave up smoking because people think that it's your lungs that smoking gets, but it isn't actually. It's your heart. So when those people go home, the smoking cessation service is the thing that maintains that support. And as councillors, I'm coming to an end, as councillors, we're meant to serve the best interest of those we represent, and we should look at these services. It might be that we say, actually, we can't afford them all, let's get rid of some of them and let's keep some of them, but we've not had the scrutiny to be able to do that. And I'm winding up. That's all I'm going to say today, but I promise you that I'll use every tool at my disposal in order to try to stop these cuts becoming the reality. It's quite simply a false economy. It'll cost our county in both financial and ill health terms ultimately. Just as bad, there's been no proper scrutiny, and I would ask that that proper scrutiny happens. It could run at the same time as the public consultation process. We could rearrange the agendas. And rather than steamrolling these cuts through, LCC should stop, scrutinise properly and then make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Would councillor, oh councillor, Nikki, if you'd like to explain why it didn't go to scrutiny?
Thank you, Chairman. I understand that the decision needs to be taken in advance of the meeting of the Adult and Public Health Scrutiny Committee. In terms of the reasons for the speed of that, I think that should be one that technical officers should respond to.
Thank you. Any councillor Brooks? Sorry, just, Martin, do you want to come back? Sorry, sorry councillor Brooks. I was saying, would you like to come back?
Yeah, if I can just cover a couple of points. First is, as Nikki has pointed out, the reason that this didn't come to Adult and Public Health Scrutiny and has come here instead is because the current contract expires at the end of next month. And if we were to go to the meeting of the Adult Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee, which is on the 3rd of September, we wouldn't be able to go to the executive in time for a new contract. So we just run out of road to extend the contract, and that's the immediate driver. And then the second point, in terms of scrutiny of proposals, clearly there aren't proposals at the moment. We are, the suggestion is that the consultation is to gain the views of Lincolnshire people, but we have built into the process that before we take a report to the executive in February, it will go to adult scrutiny beforehand. And indeed, there are enough meetings of that committee that if the committee wanted to have an item on this before that, in addition, that would be entirely doable.
Thank you, Martin. Councillor Brooks?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Martin, for the report. The question is, how will the coastal and rural communities be fully represented in this consultation's findings? Also, what measurable outcomes are expected during the 12 months' extension to assure service remains effective? Thank you.
So in terms of the representation of coastal and rural communities, the consultation will be undertaken by the council's communications and engagement team, so in the same way that all of the consultations that the council operates, there is always effort to ensure that there is good representation from across the Lincolnshire community. So that will be the same for this consultation as for all others that we, that the council operates. In terms of outcomes from the contract, there are a range of key performance indicators built into the contract, which are reported through on a regular basis. Those would continue, and it's all about the number of people who are recruited into the different programmes, the number of people who complete the programmes and the impact on them. So for example, the healthy weight service measures the proportion of body weight lost by the individuals, and there are key performance indicators for that. So there's quite a range of performance data that is collected and monitored on a regular basis.
Thank you, Martin. Councillor Davis?
Thank you. I would echo some of councillor Lee's concerns, actually, and it does feel like, yet again, scrutiny is coming second to decision-making, and I think we need to be wary of that. I think Martin's alluded to some quite useful idea about parallel working in terms of scrutinising it as things develop. I mean, one of my questions would be straight away on kind of page 24. You refer to KPIs suggesting it's a good service, but there isn't any detail about what those KPIs are, what the benchmarking looks like. I think that kind of detail is really important to assess. But I would, to slightly play devil's advocate, while I agree with councillor Lee in terms of NHS outcomes, fundamentally, as a local authority, we are cash-strapped and we need to be making some really difficult decisions about what is core service and what isn't. So, you know, I have sympathy for the decision-makers on benches opposite here about when you're looking about what you do, you have to make some tough, difficult decisions. My only request would be that before those tough, difficult decisions are made, that all the evidence is presented in a very clear understanding so people know the impacts. And just coming back to councillor Brooks's point, I think it was an excellent one. I think it's fair to say your community have missed out on the LGR consultation, there hasn't been enough on the coast, it's been picked up. Can we make sure that, you know, whenever these consultations are done, people do remember that there is something after you pass over the other side of the A15, as dark as it might be over there sometimes?
Thank you, councillor Davis. Councillor Hill?
Thank you. Are we doing one question at a time, Chairman? Is it the same rules as previously? Right? Okay. I thank Martin for his presentation, which is probably a little bit too short, because the truth of the matter is, the previous executive actually went through this process earlier in the year because the contract was coming up for renewal. So what had happened was that that has gone, it went through the executive immediately under a previous administration, and of course, new administrations are perfectly entitled to look at things afresh. So it went through the executive, was passed by the, went through the council effectively, and then we went out to a tendering process and obviously went through all of that success. Correct me if I'm wrong, a successful provider was identified to start the new service in a month's time. So the reason for this rushing about and the lack of scrutiny and last-minute changes is purely because the council has decided to throw all that up in the air and start all over again. So I think, again, we seem to have a bit of a problem with, what shall I say, with correct scrutiny, I'll put it like that, that really this sort of thing should have been thought of earlier in the year, which would have given people the opportunity to change what they're doing. So, Martin, I'm correct in all that I've said, aren't I?
Martin?
Sorry, I think the key point in what you're saying is that it is entirely appropriate for a new administration to take a view.
I appreciate that.
And that is essentially, so you are right, there was a process under the previous administration, the new administration has decided to take this opportunity.
So if I come to the contract then, I'm correct in saying this is a public health grant, this is not, this is not, repeat, not local money, which is either taken through council tax or business rate. It is a grant from the government. And in that, so the issue is, there is not a direct saving if we decided to slash this particular budget, there will not be a direct saving to the council. And I wonder if, Martin, could you explain the arrangements for ring fencing of the public health grant? I think that would be quite useful.
Thank you, Martin.
So you are correct, this is public health grant funding. The money is given to the council by the Department of Health and Social Care for a range of, well, for activity that promotes the health and wellbeing of the Lincolnshire population. A small proportion of the funding has to be directed to certain services which are prescribed, is the technical term. So we have to run NHS health checks, we have to run effectively a health visitor service for the 0-5 age of children. Beyond that, it is for the discretion of the council to decide where that money is most appropriately spent, so long as it is for the health and wellbeing of the people of Lincolnshire. And therefore, the aim here is to see, is spending this money on the Integrated Lifestyle Service the best way to spend the money? But you are, you're correct, the money has to be spent on services that promote the health and wellbeing of the population of Lincolnshire. So if the money isn't spent here, it has to be spent on something else which does promote the health and wellbeing of the people of Lincolnshire.
So just to carry on then, so who decides whether, for example, you could say, let's not spend money on smoking cessation and fill potholes. So who decides what is the, I mean, obviously, the department will have a view on what is appropriate and whatnot, but within the council, who decides what is the appropriate, whether the spend is actually appropriate for what the Department of Health wants it to do?
So the statutory responsibility for that rests with Derek Ward as Director of Public Health. So any proposals to change alternative funding for the public health grant would clearly go through political processes. However, it would have officer and finance advice on that as to whether it meets the conditions of the grant for the health, for the public health grant. And ultimately, signing off the grant is the statutory responsibility of the Director of Public Health.
Thank you. In terms of, so just to understand, there's mention of a special grant for a million pounds and then also the smoking. Is that part of the public health grant as well?
No. So we, the government gives local authorities an additional grant, smoke-free, get my teeth right, the smoke-free generation grant. That is for additionality for smoking cessation activity. It has been confirmed for this year. The government has indicated that it will be continued for the next spending review period, so for the next three years, but we haven't had confirmation of that. But that is additional funding on top of the public health grant, as I intended for additionality for smoking cessation activity.
So it's correct to say then that of the, is it 3 million, the total over the three years, was it 5 million?
So the, at present, the council spends 2.7 million from the public health grant, 500,000 on top of that, so you end up with 3.2 is from... 500,000 on top of that, so you end up with 3.2 is from the NHS for the healthy weight activity for people about to have an operation, and then there's a further 1.1 million, so it takes you up to 4.3 million for, including the smoke-free generation. The numbers for the proposed contract are a little bit different because at this stage, we haven't had a guarantee that the smoke-free generation funding will be available for the next financial year, and therefore, we've had to work on the basis of, we know that we've been promised it for this year, we don't know that we'll get it for next year, and therefore, there's, there's a, a potential to different values.
So, it is arguable that the million plus the 500,000 is at risk if we change our, our, what we do? I think that's a fair comment. Is it risk, it might, it might or might not be carried on in the future?
There are, the, the NHS and DHSC, in terms of that funding, they, they would make the final decision whether they wanted to give it to us.
Final question, I'm sorry to go on. In terms of the, and I, from memory, when, there was obviously a whole lot of review, I think it was mentioned earlier, can we have a review of how the current contract works? I think we went into some detail when the previous executive made a decision. And from memory, there's cer, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I asked Martin to give a review, but my memory is that the service was performing well, above average for the nationally, and also, there were no issues. But could Martin just give a summary of the review that was done in the beginning of the year, what that established on the, the quality of the current contract? Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
So, I think, as councillor Hill is indicating, we, we have reviewed the service, it is a good service, it benchmarks well with other services. I think the issue that we're looking at at this stage is not, is this a good service or not, but in the context of the financial situation of the council as a whole, is this the most effective way to spend this money? So, it's, so I think there are two slightly different questions. So, yes, the service has been reviewed, it is a good service in national terms, but in the context of the council, is this the best way to spend the money? And that's, that's really what the consultation is after, and what the executive will be asked to, to consider when it looks at this in September, subject of course, to the executive deciding to do this at its, at its meeting next week.
Thank you, Martin. Thanks to you, councillor Hill. Councillor Reeve?
Thank you, Chairman. Not so much a question, just a quick statement I'd like to make. I've previously worked and trained as a hypnotherapist, and dealt with lots of people with weight loss, smoking, exercise, those sort of things. And the bottom line is, people need to take responsibility for themselves and not have everything handed to them in some sort of nanny state. People being rang up and said, oh, have you considered losing weight, have you considered taking more exercise? It becomes a tick-box exercise by such as the ILS, and I believe that the money could be better spent in other areas if we were receiving that money from the government. If people are paying for something directly out of their own pocket, it's been proven through the type of work I've previously done, that they are more likely to carry it out. If you're paying £50 a month for gym membership, you're going to want to go to get your money's worth. If it's being handed to you free, or supposedly free, it's still coming out of your income tax, but if they can see it directly out of their own pocket, they're more likely to carry it out. And I just think this money could be better spent elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reeve. Councillor Dilks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the last comment shows where this is going, and confirms the suspicions from my colleagues, and I've got to say, when you've got the, the Labour opposition and the Conservative opposition joining together and agreeing with each other, you know there's something wrong here, if I could put it that way. And I share those concerns myself. This is clearly being rushed, and it's been rushed to give a headline in next year's budget, that's what we're looking at. So, what worries me about it is the rush, and I mean, I can appreciate, I can appreciate, you know, the desire, we need to make sure that money is well-spent, of course, given, and, and everybody will, will agree with that. But what worries me is, is how are we going to consult? And frankly, has, has the decision already been made, given the last comment? And how is this consultation going to be constructed? What are the questions in it? You know, and I know, and we all know, you can get whatever answers you want in a consultation if you ask the loaded questions, and I've seen that happen within here too many times. So, how are we, how are we actually going to measure the value of these services? If we just say to the public, you know, do you think we spend too much on, on people who are too fat, or, you know, people who smoke too much, taking the, the, you know, people are going to say, yes, we spend too much. So, who's actually, you know, who's actually going to measure it, and will it be properly measured? And that really brings me to where I think, you know, I, I can understand us going for a one-year extension to the contract now, but that doesn't put the pressure on, that will relieve the pressure and allow more time for a proper consultation, and a more meaningful consultation, other than just going through the, you know, having a consultation that frankly doesn't mean a lot, because I can just see that coming. Sorry to be sceptical, but, you know, it just doesn't seem right at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. Martin?
So, a couple of, just responding to those, those queries, so you'll note that the report to the executive seeks delegation for the authority to set the questions and run the consultation, to me as an officer, rather than to, to members. That is designed to ensure that the consultation is a fair, open, and genuine consultation. And I think also, if the consultation questions were loaded, then that would effectively take away the entire point of the consultation, because it would then be subject to being JR'd as, as not being a fair and open consultation. So, it's part of my responsibility as an officer to ensure that the consultation questions and process are genuinely fair and open, and don't lead to any particular conclusion, and that is a, a process that I'm looking at at the, at the moment. And then in terms of whether the decision has already been made, I haven't written the recommendation report for the, for the executive, and I don't at the moment know what that report will, will say. So, no decision has been made, this is a genuine consultation to inform the executive to be able to take a, a, a full and informed view in February of next year.
Councillor Dilks? Do you want to respond?
Oh, not to, I'm not entirely sure.
Councillor Collier?
Thank you very much. Been interesting listening to everybody. I have to agree with councillor Lee, though, what she's saying, how valuable this service is. I don't like the idea that we are putting politics before people here either. We have to remember, we are serving the people of Lincolnshire, all of them, whatever, whoever they voted for, and that always annoys me very much. We are here for the people. Money must be spent wisely, though, so we do need to scrutinise this very clearly. I have one question in particular, who monitors Slimming World, for instance, the 12 weeks that people are given? I have somebody, I know someone that's now on a third course of this free 12 weeks. Where does that stop? I mean, is one enough? We've got to motivate people, obviously, with all the health problems, we have to, and I agree with councillor Reeve, that we do need to take and encourage people to take care of themselves, their own health, we have to do that ultimately, but some people, we have to recognise, need that extra help, encouragement, support, but how much do we support them? Is it three times in go, four times? Is this ongoing? I mean, where does it stop? We have to scrutinise this very clearly and openly. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to go back, Martin?
Yeah, just to, to pick up a couple of those points, so the, the public health team in the council, they, I've mentioned previously, we have a range of key performance indicators, the public health team in the council work very closely with the, with the provider to monitor performance against those key performance indicators. It sets out in the service specification what the criteria for people being referred into the services are, and all of the services, they're not, they're not open access to the public, or for all of them, you have to be referred by a professional, making a professional view of, could this person benefit from the service? And, and that's part of the criteria that is set out in the service specifications. So, we do try to do our, our best to make sure that the service is used for the people who will benefit from it, and that it is properly targeted and properly effective.
Thank you, Martin. I've actually got a question. I've had 12 weeks free, some time back on Slimming World, Worcester Stone, so I wanted to check, and I'm now paying myself, and have done for the last six months, it's all going, do you monitor, because I, I struggled to get it, I had to, I was told I can get it, and then the, obviously, this Integrated Lifestyle Service consultation didn't come back to me at all, I managed to get it eventually. However, do you monitor, if people are getting it free, do you monitor whether they're actually going?
Short answer to that is yes. Part of the key performance indicators are how many people are referred, how many people start, how many people finish the programme, and in terms of the, the weight loss programmes, how much weight was lost. So, all of those are measured and tracked.
So, I'm somewhere on some stat somewhere. That's good, then. Excellent, right. Thank you. Councillor Findley?
Yeah, thank you, Martin. Thank you, Chair. A smoke-free generation pretty much says what it's trying to achieve, and the importance of helping people stop is massive. It's a very expensive and very, there's so many complicated health issues with it. So, I think it's a valuable service, but from a reach-out point of view, you look at 1 million per, 1.1 million, I think it is, for the smoke-free generation funding, spread out over a county this size, you think, is that enough? Is that plenty? Does it achieve enough? And then when you look at the area of Lincolnshire, and how many areas from towns, villages, cities across Lincolnshire, I try and think to myself, is it evenly distributed, this in relation to the county's small pot of money to help people stop smoking? Because of obviously how important it is to help people stop smoking. So, could you give us a better idea of how it would be distributed evenly, whether you reach out for local organisations, or schools in particular, colleges, universities? Because obviously, stopping them at a young age helps them later in life from developing, costing them a lot of money in developing health issues. And, well, generally, the sort of that is where I'm heading with it.
Thank you.
So, I, I won't go into a huge amount of detail, so the, the amount of money, the 1.1 million additional grant for the smoke-free generation work, that is determined by the Department of Health and Social Care, so that's the calculation that, that they have made. In terms of how it is spent, we have deliberately focused on areas which, and communities that have higher levels of smoking than the norm, so it tends to be communities that are more deprived, quite a lot of communities on the eastern, on the eastern coast. So, essentially, groups of people who have a higher-than-normal smoking prevalence, we focus the money on those groups because clearly, they found it more difficult to stop smoking. So, for example, Lincolnshire has a much higher proportion of women giving birth who are smoking compared to other parts of the country, so we are particularly focusing on that cohort to try to, using the money to try to help them to stop smoking.
Thank you, Martin. Councillor Lee?
Sorry, sorry, Chair.
May I just come back?
Yeah, just got another question on top of that. Do you use, do you have like a list of existing data or information from previous programmes, or existing programmes now that you can use alongside this scheme for smoking? Obviously, there's, from a government level or local levels, there's various help you non-smoking, stop your smoking schemes, and I didn't know whether you had that data or your own data to justify how you can concentrate this pot of money on improving a service to help people stop smoking?
So, the simple answer to your question is yes, we have, public health are notorious for having large amounts of, of data and comparative data. So, about half of the 2.7 million public health grant money that's put into the ILS is spent on smoking cessation activity, that's therefore on top of the one, or rather, the 1.1 million is on top of the money that the council already spends through the public health grant, and we have a large amount of data around not just the smoking cessation services that are delivered by the county council or through the county council, but there are other services that are delivered through the NHS as well, and we're aware of, of what those are, so we can, we can try to blend them together to have the most impact for the Lincolnshire population.
Thank you, Martin. Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for bearing with me, we don't normally get to talk twice, do we? I just want to make a request, because the one thing that's come across is, people don't really know very much about this, and that people are concerned about the lack of scrutiny. So, can we have, can we bring the scrutiny forward, please? Can we, I think there probably, I don't know what the scrutiny dates are for adult scrutiny and for health scrutiny, but I would imagine there are meetings in November. We need a paper, all these questions that have been asked today, that should have been in this paper, that's what scrutiny does. So, I would ask, we could run that scrutiny, parallel with a, with a consultation, and even though we don't have proposals, you could give an awful lot of information about what each of those services delivered and the potential impact of losing them. And I would say, too, this does have to go to health scrutiny, because whilst we're a, a, a local authority paying for so much, the impact on our residents, should these cuts happen, the impact on GP services will hit our residents, and we have to look at that, we have to look at the whole, the whole thing in the broad. These, these are big cuts, they'll have a big impact. So, my request is, can we pull the scrutiny forward? Can we run it parallel to the public consultation as a, as an information exercise about what it might look like if those services go? Thank you.
Thanks to councillor Lee. I think that's something we should look into, and we will do.
Yeah, just to say, absolutely, there's, there's no reason why during the consultation process, we couldn't bring this to the scrutiny committee, and equally then, obviously, as planned, once the consultation has seen its outcome, it would also go back to scrutiny as well, but happy to put something additional in. Just in relation to scrutinising by two separate committees, this, this council's arrangements is normally that there is one scrutiny, not two scrutiny committees, but happy to take an on-flying conversation about whether we bring those two scrutiny committees to have a joint meeting to discuss this in terms of process. But process, we wouldn't ordinarily bring it to two committees, but happy to look at how we can compromise around making sure that all members who want to have a voice in this can have one.
Thank you. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it is legitimate to look at whether this is, as councillor Reeve has said, whether this is the best way of spending government money effectively, and whether it could be redirected. But I would point out that it is unfortunate that it should have been done in a more orderly fashion, it's not very respectful for our partners, it's certainly not respectful for all those people who have tended for these services, and if I were they, I'd be probably feeling a little bit less happy with the county council, and probably a little bit more inclined to increase my fees for whatever. As I've said, I mean, personally, I, I've always favoured, as Martin knows, more focus on exercise at the expense of other things. So, I do think that that's something we just need to come back to. And I think I'll make a plea for part of it, if I take the fall service, for example, which was brought in a few years ago, that actually has a direct, quick benefit to the county council, because if we can prevent people falling and then going into hospital, and then probably going into having care at home, or indeed, having, going into a care home, and the fall services have done that, that actually is not just a saving to the NHS, it's a big saving to the council. So, I think as part of the redirection of resources to other ways of doing this, I would put, I think members need to be aware that in terms of the interests of the council, there is a payback, and the payback for something like the fall service is pretty quick. I've just got one question, is, when we consult, will we be consulting on what sort of options, other options there are? Because as we know with consultation, people, you know, motherhood and apple pie, but this is the choice, would you like more money spending on X or Y or Z? So, I'm just questioning how we can actually get that information from the public, who I don't think actually come back to the consultation in huge numbers, if I'm mistaken.
Thank you, Martin.
So the consultation questions are still being prepared, but at present, one of the ones that we're looking at is rather than setting out specific services that the money might be spent on as a potential alternative, to ask if there are particular population groups that people might see as a particular priority. So as of example, families with young children or older people or people with learning disability or care levers. So that's the route that we're looking at at the moment.
Thank you, Martin. Any further questions? councillor Catton. Sorry, did you say?
Me.
Sorry, Kane.
Yeah, just to follow up on councillor Hill's question there. So just for a point of clarity, before the decision is made around a change of contract, that will come back before scrutiny, before going to the executive, is that correct?
Yes.
Any further questions? This now concludes our discussion of this item. Actions proposed in the report to consider a report to determine whether the board support the six recommendations in the executive as set out on pages 18 to 19 and to agree any comments by the board to be passed to the executive on this item. Just to remind, this is for members of the board only. I move that the board, following thorough consideration of all the relevant information, supports the recommendations to the executive as detailed on pages 18 and 19 of the report. And I move that a summary of comments to be passed on to the executive for its consideration on the 2nd of September. Do I have a second, Findley? Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? I believe that's passed. I'd like to thank members of the Adult and Care and Public Scrutiny Committee for attending this meeting. You're welcome to attend the rest of the meeting as observers if you wish. Tender nine, Fleetwood Lane and Primary School Mobile Replacement and Remodeling. This pre-decision scrutiny report was circulated on Tuesday the 26th of August as part of the supplementary pack. Two pages off the report, that is appendix C, contain what local government law refers to as exempt information and has not been made available to the public. Executive councillor for Children's Services and Executive councillor for Resources are due to consider the report for a decision between the 15th and 19th of September. This report will be presented by Dave Pennington, Head of Capital Projects and Professional Services, and Matthew Clayton, Head of Education. Support. Also present, I support our Martin Smith Assistant Director of Children's Education, Becky Willow's Project Manager and Corporate Property. Dave Pennington and Matthew Clayton, would you like to present the paper?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be presenting the paper today. So just by way of context, I'll keep this relatively brief, this, we are replacing, we're delivering a programme of replacing mobiles at schools. You may remember when you went to school, being taught in such facilities which are old and dilapidated. We have a number of these around the county. We've already delivered three of them at Baston, Leisingham and in the process of delivering one at South Highcombe. This one at Fleetwood Lane is the next one in the programme. I'm just going to show you a couple of photos and just take you through what we're doing and then invite the committee for any questions. As you can see here, a picture tells a thousand words. What we've got at Fleetwood is a rotting and dilapidated and end-of-life mobile. Just to point out, as you can see, those of you who may be able to see my mouse, you can see along the bottom line there, we've got water ingress. The floor is rotting. It is an unfit and ill-suited environment for teaching children any longer and is in need of replacement, as I hope you can see from those photos. I'll just show you another one for completeness. This is the entrance. It is beyond a lick of paint. Just by way of context, the school that we're looking at is Fleetwood Lane. And this is, as you're looking at the road, looking into it, the classroom is going to go where the white car is currently, where you can see. So there's three car parking spaces where the classroom will go. I will just show you a floor plan of the area that we're proposing to redevelop. So it's not just about replacing a mobile classroom, it's about integrating it into the existing school. So what we've got currently, as you'll notice from that previous image, that white car is roughly where my mouse is. You've currently got a head teacher's office, a secretary's office and a relatively small classroom. What we're actually doing as part of the project, this is the, this is the plan that we're proposing, is we've got a classroom here, which is 55 square metres. We're providing a slightly larger staff room. We're now providing, so the school doesn't have a secure entrance or a secure lobby at the moment, so we're just redeveloping that area slightly so that it now has a secure entrance with a ramped access, which you can hopefully see where my mouse is now. And then we are relocating the head teacher's office as well. What we're also doing is, if you remember on that image that I showed you from Google Maps where that white car is going, we're also having to re-provide those three car parking spaces to the right here. That gives you a bit of an overview and a bit of flavour of what we're doing. It's a dilapidated mobile classroom. It's been replaced with a new permanent build, which will, is anticipated the last around 60 years. I'd invite the committee for any questions.
Thank you. Well, now I'd like to move on with the board's questions and debate initially focused on the public report, part pages nine to 26 of the supplementary pack. councillor Collier.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. As we can see by those photographs, it's well past its sell-by date, if you like. Are classes still being held in that building? Is it safe to do so if they are?
Thank you, councillor Collier. Yes, the rest of the school is in good condition. It's just this mobile classroom that is in poor condition at the moment. Thank you.
Can I just add, please? Thank you. And also just wanted to ask as well, I read on the government webpage there that there's a capacity for 175 children in that school at the moment and they only have 163 at the moment, in line with other schools and the population of children is going down. Are you expecting that to come down again as well?
Thank you for that question. As part of the programme, we review the necessity for the capacity that's needed at each school before we look to invest in it, these sums of money. So we look at the projections data we've got, looking at birth rates across the council, across the whole area. As you say, birth rates are falling or have fallen, I should say. They've stabilised now, they're not continuing to fall. But it does mean that there's lower numbers coming through. We've looked at this area. It does indicate that sustainable numbers around 160, 175, they will fluctuate a little bit from one year to next, but there's nothing to indicate that numbers would fall down to a number that would suggest we wouldn't need this classroom in the long term, certainly not within the period of time that we can see ahead, which is about five years, given birth rates coming through over naught to five.
Thank you. councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. Report notes the costs are at the high end. Contract controls are key. Which specific NEC4 safeguards will be applied here to stop costs climbing further? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you councillor Brooks for the question. So yeah, you're correct, we're using NEC, a contract type, and option A, which is a fixed-price contract. So we are following executive decision-making, we will be getting into contract. And that is, as I've already said, it's fixed price. Now, that means that the contractor has to deliver it in accordance with that price. With the contract, there is also delay damages which we will enact as well. So if they are late, the contractor will be penalised through delay damages, which is a sum of money, which is worked out on a weekly basis. So if they are late for whatever reason. Under the contract, there are certain clauses where a contractor could claim additional costs. So I won't go into the detail because it's in the exempt section, but in this area, there is a particular risk around archaeology, for example. When the previous school hall was built, archaeology was found. Now, that is a risk that a contractor won't take. So our risk budget does allow for that. And so that would be a valid, what's known as compensation event by the contractor where they could come to us for costs. But clearly archaeology is one of those things that until you break ground, you won't know the full extent of it. There could be nothing from a toenail of Richard III through to extensive Roman burials. We don't anticipate there is anything extensive there, but we have catered for that. But aside from exceptional reasons, this is a fixed-price contract.
Thank you, councillor Brooks. Any further questions on the board? I would like to invite members of the board to make any relevant statements and ask any further questions on the open part of the report. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments on appendix C, which is exempt? No? This now concludes our discussion of this item. I will now move to our conclusions. Actions proposed in the report to consider a report and determine whether the board support the recommendations to the executive councillors are set out on page 12 of the supplementary pack circulating on the 26th of August and to agree any comments by the board to be passed to the executive on this item. I move that the board supports the recommendation. The councillors for Children's Services and Executive councillor for Resources detailed on page 12 of the supplementary pack circulated on the 26th of August. And I move that a summary of our statements be passed on to the executive councillors for the considerations between the 15th and 19th of September 2025. Do I have a second, Brooks? Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? I think that was passed. I think now may be a good time for a comfort break. So we'll take a five-minute comfort break before we get into the review of the financial performance. If we can please be back for 10 past 11? That'd be great. Thank you. So we'll go to Agenda Item 10. Review of the Financial Performance 2025-26 Quarter One. This pre-decision scrutiny report can be found between pages 29 and 78 of the Agenda Pack. The report to the executive outlines a council's financial performance in the first quarter of 2025 to 26. The executive is due to make a decision on this on the 2nd of September 2025. This report will be presented by Michelle Grady, Assistant Director of Finance. Also present and support is Stevie Howe, Strategic Finance Manager, Financial Planning and Analysis. Michelle, would you like to present your paper?
I will, thank you very much and I'll just jump straight into some of the key points, if that's okay. So Table 1 on page 33 of the report shows our current revenue position for the forecast spend against the budget set for the current financial year as at quarter one. We're currently showing a small underspend of 0.8 million over our general fund services and this does include a number of variances across our services which are detailed in the Appendix A from page 42. The table also highlights that we're forecasting an overspend on the dedicated schools grant for 25-26 of 20 million, which is predominantly driven by the pressures on the high needs block. This position will be ring-fenced as a deficit position as per the government's statutory override requirement. In terms of our capital budget, page two on page 35 provides an update of our capital programme, which had planned for £286 million worth of investment for the current financial year. The table also sets out the external funding and borrowing requirement for that programme. The overall spend forecast at present is mainly in line with the budget for the current financial year, but you'll see from the table there's an increase in the use of external funding available, which has produced some slippage in the borrowing requirement. The report also highlights pressures in the overall scheme costs for two of our major road schemes, which is Grantham Southern Relief Road and North Hycombe Relief Road, which fall into future years of the programme. As well as the quarter one information, the report also highlights the financial planning that the offices and council has been undertaken and some updates on the future funding for the council. So when the budget was set for the current year, we highlighted some budget challenges that we'd forecast into future years based on the cost and demand for our services and the funding that we was expecting to receive. Our future funding levels remain uncertain and under pressure and the report highlights the full budget review that's been ongoing. Members will be aware that the government's proposed change to the funding, which it distributes its money to councils and page 67 of the report provides a summary of the government's fair funding review consultation. The premise is that the government are seeking to update their assessment of relative need for each council and compare that to its ability to raise funding locally and will assume local council tax decisions are maximised as part of this council calculation to determine any gap in our future funding. The consultation from government's now closed and we'll not explicitly know the outcome of that until the settlements received in December alongside any changes to our business rates baseline and we'll look to brief members as and when we've got the outcome of that. Quite happy to take any questions or cover anything else in the report as it's set out.
Thank you, Michelle. Short and sweet, thank you very much. Have we got any questions? councillor Davies.
Thank you, two questions and I'll do them separately for you, Mr Chairman. Well, one's a comment. Page 13, Karen's Report to the Treasury Management Annual Report. It says 2025-2025, I'm guessing that's a typo, as it seems to be the smallest typo. Do I win some kind of award, Mr Chairman? On a more serious note, just coming on to the DSG changes. This phrase, negative deficit relief, kind of creeps in, but we're talking about a big amount of money. The paragraph 1.9 then talks about the government expecting us to fund that out of our DSG budget but not out of the general fund. I just wonder whether you could explain what the plan is there in terms of the fact that the deficit is now so high within that ring-fenced budget and how will that be matched by this? But if we can't take it out of general fund, where is it going to come from? Thank you.
So I'll cover just some of the technical bits there first and then I'm sure Debbie can come in about the plan around some of the sense of stuff. So we are unusual in that we're probably one of the tail end of councils that are going into a deficit position on the dedicated schools grant and some of the numbers for other councils are quite eye-watering, to be honest, and which is why the government's put this statutory override in, which is basically says you've got a requirement as part of the code of practice to make sure that you're balanced in your budgets and you can fund everything that you're doing and you're a going concern. But because of this DSG position, they've put a kind of stop in around the dedicated schools grant for that, which allows you to carry on a negative budget. They're not suggesting that there's any funding going to be available for that and it's something that the government are addressing because clearly it's a massive problem for all authorities that are responsible for education. There is a number of actions we've already taken in place, which is probably why we're at the back end of this problem, such as investing in our special school places and alternative provision places. But unless something's changed in the system, then this is going to be an ongoing problem. But it's a kind of ring-fenced problem that's been parked to one side but clearly needs addressing at some point by the government policy. So Debbie can probably just pick up on some of the things that we're doing to try and address this here.
Yeah, so I'll cover the national position first and then come on to some of the more local things. So as Michelle has said, following the implementation of the special educational needs reforms, which came in, I think in 2014 is when they were first introduced. Currently, we're in a position now where 80% of local authorities are in a position in terms of the statutory override and the overspend in relation to the higher needs block out of the dedicated schools budget. The amount of deficit that's been fought, well, the amount of deficit currently attributed to those 80% local authorities are three billion and it says expected to go up to 27-28 billion, sorry, seven billion in 27-28. So it is a significant national issue. It's a well-known significant national issue and the government have, in terms of, as Michelle said, a temporary statutory override facilities to enable local authorities to be in that deficit position in relation to the special educational needs. It is clearly not a long-term sustainable solution at all and nobody thinks that it is and everybody is challenging the government in terms of what they're going to do about it. So the government have set up a national group. They have actually, we're fortunate in that Heather Sandy, our Director of Children's Services, has been appointed as a local authority advisor in there. So we've got a sort of fast track to government in relation to understanding what's happening around the special educational needs and they're wanting to embark on a major national reform around the special educational needs system because they recognise that it's currently not sustainable. Clearly, they're still working through what those plans would be. Ultimately, they see a much greater focus on supporting children in mainstream rather than children needing to go to specialist schools, special educational needs, with a view that if a child is in a mainstream school, then their support that they need around special educational needs should be embedded within that mainstream school. So the additional education, health and care plan that enables money for individual children, if you like, would not be present within the mainstream sector and would only be something that kicks in if children were considered that their needs were so great that they need to go to a special educational school. Now, clearly, as you would imagine, that is hugely, hugely contentious. The government have made some announcements in terms of that intent for greater inclusion and understandably, the parent groups are clearly wanting assurance about how they can be assured that children therefore in mainstream school will continue to be supported. So a lot of that is playing out at the moment and obviously from the sector's perspective, the other bit of the unanswered question around the reforms is therefore around how you would double fund the two systems because you can't just turn off one system and start another system. You need to double fund the new system to create confidence in the mainstream sector as well as then supporting children who have got an education, health and care plan apart as linked to the old system. So lots of national focus on special educational needs and we wait with bated breath to understand what will happen. But certainly, as I say, we have now more latterly joined the 80% of local authorities that are in that position. As Michelle has said, there are equally things that we are doing locally to drive greater improvement and inclusion across Greater Lincolnshire. So we know that we've completed the first phase of investing in special schools in order to provide increased amount of places and enable special schools to become more generic in their nature and meet the needs of all children within their community that needs specialist provision, rather than the sort of bespoke position that we had before. And also, a series of proposals going through have gone, not too sure of where they are in the political process, going to scrutiny and then to the executive for what we're calling specialist units within mainstream. So enable mainstream schools to work together in a cluster for one of them to be able to offer much more bespoke additional support in collaboration and linked with the special schools within the community to stop the need of children needing to go to specialist provision. Also doing some other things around reviewing the banding for children with special educational needs, also working about how we can announce our hub so that schools can get greater access to advice and support, looking at the role of educational psychology. So doing a lot of things locally, but everything that we do will, while it may contribute and help and improve outcomes as well as addressing the financial impact, the bottom line is that this needs national reform and it's not something that we can solve just on our own. It needs national reform. So just to give you, I'll say one more comment and then pause. So if parents are unhappy with the provision or unhappy with the decisions that the local authority make, they can go to tribunal and challenge that at a first-tier tribunal and the legislation is weighted in favour of parents and so individual parents' needs and child's needs are considered more paramount within the system, if you like. And so what that means is that local authorities nationally lose 98% of cases, which I think, you know, the law of average doesn't feel quite right. So it's just, again, an example about how the national system does need reform, but isn't going to be easy.
Thank you, Debbie. councillor Davies?
Yeah, thank you, that was a very comprehensive answer, thank you Debbie. Just in cash terms, Michelle, where does this sit on the balance sheet then?
So all of our reserves are cash-backed and clearly if you've got a negative reserve, that has an impact on your cash. So the larger that deficit grows, the more impact it has on your cash availability for things like internal borrowing. So the cash-backed reserve clearly has an impact on that.
And just to link to that, so this is something that the sector and certainly the chief executives nationally are seeking to get more clarity around because whilst the deficit, if you like, you know, hangs on in there and we need national reform, at some point, and Lincolnshire is not in this position, I do want to stress, at some point councils will struggle in terms of cash flow because of that very issue. We're not there yet, we haven't got there yet, but we are waiting for the first council to go into that position.
Thank you, Debbie. Can I ask a question? Twenty million a year deficit, how long would it be before we run out? Let's go for the doomsday. Over to you, Michelle.
So clearly Karen's Treasury Report kind of highlights that any given time, we've probably got 250 million, around 200 million on cash balances around our various investments that we manage for cash flow. It will impact on things like our interest earned before it starts to impact on our ability to actually cash flow the council's business. So 20 million's a big number, but we're a long way off getting to not having any cash available to be able to. It would be the interest earning that impacts us first before our ability to finance.
There's many other local authorities that will be there before we are.
Oh, yes, I'm sure, thank you very much. councillor Finley.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Michelle. Just for clarity really, the financial performance, particularly the overspend forecast noted on page 1.1 and further significant overspends forecasts, such as the 30 million on the Grantham Relief Road and the 14 million on the North Hycombe Relief Road, listed on 1.1. I understand these commitments, you know, I do fully understand and appreciate these were made under the previous administration, however, that funding is being allocated to these ongoing large-scale projects. To what extent is the council's current financial performance being affected by these ongoing pressures relating to significant overspends, including the additional borrowing and long-term risk, financial risk exposures to highlighted?
So clearly, we committed to some of these schemes and any overspend does require further borrowing. We talked at the year-end position when we were at scrutiny in June about voluntary revenue provision and some of the provision we've been making from capital financing underspends in previous years to kind of save up, if you like, to address some of this. So it's not having an immediate impact on our financial position in terms of additional borrowing required, but clearly if it goes beyond what we're providing for, then that will start to have an impact.
Thank you, Michelle. councillor Finley, would you like to come back?
Yes, sorry. Yeah, further to that then, so on the current forecast overspends, is there any way that those could be, those forecasts could be increased or reduced?
So usually if we're forecasting overspends on existing capital projects partway through the year, we'll look to address that when we come to set the budgets for future years in the programme and we'll look to see if there's any offsets we can do in terms of what's in the total programme, to look at the total borrowing requirement. In terms of individual contracts and projects, it's probably something else that the officers can answer that are covering those projects. But we do look to refresh the programme every year to reflect current expected costs for any overall underspends in the programme and make sure the programme remains affordable within our overall programme budget.
Thank you, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. Excuse me. I mean, obviously an overall situation at this early stage, it's only the first quarter, predicting a small underspend, but of course, within the detail of that is quite clear there are some pretty large overspend which are being cross-subsidised effectively by, certainly by resources, which I think is probably, you could argue, is a windfall, but also by an underspend in highways. And I'd just like to pay tribute to councillor Davies here because the underspend in highways is actually additional income from fees and charges for roadworks and what have you. I have to say, I was quite sceptical when this was brought in by councillor Davies, that would he actually raise much money? But it has and it is producing a healthy extra income, should I put it to the council. Whether that money should be then used to cross-subsidise children's services is an interesting point and it's early days yet, but one could argue that highways, money generated within the highways budget should stay within highways budget, but we'll see how that. But we'll see how that plays out during the rest of this financial year. Heather Sand is not here, so there is projected 4.3 million pounds overspend in highway in children's services. Could I ask the portfolio holder what's being done about that?
councillor Oliver?
Yes, of course. Obviously Debbie's already given you an in-depth description as to the demands that we are facing with Send. Obviously, we are bringing in the Send hubs at a speed as quickly as possible in order to create places for children that so desperately need this additional help within the mainstream setting. You know, Debbie's description gave you a really good insight into just how serious this national issue really is. We are awaiting the White Paper, which is due in the autumn. It was supposed to be prior to recess, however, it didn't come unfortunately. So we are waiting with bated breath, as Debbie has already mentioned, for these reforms that are so desperately required. In terms of my position politically, I'm actually pushing a cross party working with this issue because it is something that we desperately need to prevent, you know, local government going bust, basically. So that's what we're doing. We're doing everything from a local level in terms of the hubs, but, you know, we need this national reform.
Thank you. councillor Hill?
Yeah, I think the previous debate was really about the DSG and the statutory override. I was merely, I was referring to the two issues which have been highlighted, which are special placements and governorship orders. Those are the two other big items. So I just wonder if I could, somebody could just talk a bit about that?
Yeah, happy to. So councillor Oliver's absolutely right, the pressure and demand in terms of children's services is being seen nationally. And we are seeing that in terms of special educational needs, which again, we've talked through, but also in terms of placements and the cost of placements around children who need to come into the care of the local authority. So when children need to come into the care of the local authority, there are a number of different legal options that you can choose. The first, if you like, in terms of the tiers of which we look for predominantly, not exclusively but predominantly, would be if a child needs to be removed from their family, but we would want to find a placement with family or friends, they'll call special guardianship orders. And they're one of the ones that we're seeing an increased demand on in terms of increased numbers of children coming into care, but an increased number in terms of children needing special guardianship orders. But positive because they're staying with family and friends. And so that's a really good outcome in terms of care, but are seeing significant pressure. I suppose the next sort of level would be then our own foster carers and then independent foster carers. And then clearly, if a young person or a child needs a residential home, it would be our own internal homes. And then if not, the independent sector. And the independent sector costs are absolutely significant and, you know, not to be underestimated. The other area where we've seen some cost and overspend is in relation to remand. So if a young person needs to be remanded into the care of the local authority, pre-trial, pre-trial, post-trial, if that child then is incarcerated, then that becomes a different, it's a government funding issue, not a local authority funding issue. But until that person is convicted, if they're needed to be remanded into secure accommodation, that is the responsibility of the local authority. And those costs have traditionally, as you'll know and remember councillor Hill, those costs, because you can't plan for them and they're very tiny numbers but huge cost, have always been managed, if you like, at the end of the year through contingency. So that's some of the 4.3, but the vast majority of the 4.3 would be, you know, placements and special guardianship orders. What are we doing about it? Clearly, we have got a significant piece of work to try and increase the amount of foster carers that we have because our own internal foster carers give better care and are cheaper than the external market and residential placements. We're also growing our own in-house residential and have been doing for some time to try and reduce reliance on the independent sector. We are doing some work across the region to see whether regional buying around placements can reduce cost in terms of cost per placement. So a number of things, but no easy, easy solution to it, but are doing various different things.
Thank you. Next question, four million has been taken out of reserves for the new IT contract. So I just wonder, Tom, if someone could explain what's happened there? Has something changed or was this always planned to take four? I know it's, some of it may be confidential. I know whether Tom could explain what's going on?
So if I just mention first, it's not quite a reserve, it's the planned use of contingency. So, and that was part of the decision?
Okay, well, wipes out, you're right, correct.
Decision report.
I stand corrected, just wiping out half the contingency.
So councillor Hill may recall the previous exempt paper that I'd have brought forward that related directly to the new, well, a number of things actually, the new IT contract, restructure of the IT function and new mechanisms that we bring in place to manage our capital expenditure and refresh profile. When we set out and we approached the market, what we wanted to do was to drive a position whereby we saw innovation back from the market and we saw a number of different submissions approaching that challenge in a number of different ways. Some of the submissions from the market had lower upfront costs, some had higher. What we're seeing here is an upfront investment that will allow us to see the savings that were articulated and detailed within that previous paper. So we're investing to save over the term of that contract. And the investment that we're making here that is contained within that business case is one of the key drivers and enablers that will allow us to see that 30 million pounds saving over that contract term.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. I have some more, but I'm happy to just shut up for a minute.
Thank you very much. councillor Brookes?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Michelle, for the report. I believe that the pressures and the needs for children's services with Send is going to increase quicker than we actually realise. And the 20 million was basically, it's going to be a drop in the ocean, to be fair. So my question is, I'm assuming we've got a defined floor for the reserves. What is that? And before any further drawdowns, what is the trigger going to be? Before we need to take corrective action.
So the government statutory override that's been put in specifically around the dedicated schools grant reserve is that it's ring fenced and doesn't touch our own reserves or our own general fund. The issue with that is to do with the cash and whether we've got the cash that we still need to run the council. And as Debbie's quite rightly put, there'll be a whole plethora of councils in front of us that are struggling with that before it gets to us. Not that that's a great position to be in, but clearly it'll be a position that the government need to do something about before we get there. There is a table in the report, which, if I can get to it, has got our reserves position. So our earmarked reserve position is set out there. I can't remember the, oh, there it is. So the actual reserve statement is on appendix D of the report on page 73. And that sets out the reserves that we have control over and we can make decisions around. And that's currently around 200 million.
councillor Brokes?
Thank you. What is the actual floor we're allowed to go to before we have to take corrective action?
So in terms of corrective action, what is it? You're...
Well, obviously, if we go down to like, for example, 20 million, we're in trouble. So what do we need to get down to?
So we have a floor of the use of reserves that we have in terms of, we've got 200 million pounds worth of reserves, once they've gone, they've gone. So you can't spend them more than once. That reflects our cash position as well. So it mentioned that Treasury Management reports will talk about 200 million pounds worth of cash that we've got to manage our cash balances. Reducing that is not good in any way, especially if you're not using it to provide services. But because the government has put this ring fence in, it's kind of a bit bottomless, I think. And the clear indication is that it's the cash position that's the trouble, rather than the position of the dedicated schools grant. So clearly, we've got 200 million pounds worth of cash and that's key for us. The more the DSG eats into that, the more problems we have in terms of we're planning for interest to be earned on that. And we've obviously planning to spend it as well, as per the reserve statement. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it's a bit of a tricky one.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody else? Oh, councillor French?
Thank you, Chair. Page 36 references the voluntary capital spending limit. How does the council's capital finance charges amount to 4.37% compared with other local authorities? And do other councils have limits or similar limits?
So all councils are required to follow the prudential code of practice and that's a recommended level. So the not exceeding the 10% of your funding limit is a recommended limit. The government has just published tables of all local councils on their outstanding debt, but doesn't give that percentage. But that's something we could look at for you if that's helpful, can do that. But that's not a figure I've got to hand at the moment. But the numbers, the actual pounds of outstanding debt across all councils is something that's published. And I know the latest tables have been published in the last couple of weeks.
Thank you. councillor Hill?
Page 64, paragraph F, the HWRC Skegness on hold. Can somebody explain what that's all about? Does that mean it's, the proposed works there aren't going to happen now?
The issue is, in the context of the requirements to comply with the Environment Act, we're reviewing the prioritisation of the works to all of our HWRC sites to determine what is the most effective and appropriate way to invest to make sure the facilities are appropriate. So it's part of an overall review tied into assessing the impact to the Environment Act and we'll update accordingly once that's been completed.
Thank you. Page 67, 15 million pounds of savings already identified, which I think the leader actually publicised earlier this month. So when do we, as scrutineers, get to see these 15 million pounds? Is it secret or are we allowed to see them? Because obviously, they are part of the savings plan, which will have to come to council eventually. So is it, will they be made public?
Absolutely. So the report sets out the process that we've been going through in terms of the full budget review across all of our services, based on the funding gaps that we had published in our financial plan in February. The officers are going through this at the moment. And as you'll know, that the executive will make proposals around those budgets and what those include in terms of any changes, either savings, cost pressures or additional income. And that will go through the full scrutiny process with members and scrutiny committees in January.
So we're in August, so the question is not when, is really when? If we know what they are now, why can't the rest of us be seeing it now?
So we're halfway through a process.
So have they been identified or not?
They've been identified by officers as potential savings and it's clearly a work in progress. There's a lot of key factors that will determine what kind of budget we need to set for February council, which includes things like the outcome of the fair funding consultation, so a bit in the paper about...
So potential savings have been potentially identified?
Potential savings have been identified, but clearly it's a work in progress and not a complete picture.
Understood. A final is a comment about the fair funding review, the national situation. And from the report, you'll see the end of the report, it actually is much more encouraging than we first feared. Early days yet, so I just really would like to give a message to the executive and particularly the leader, there will be a massive pushback from other councils. We've had this before where this council has gained, remember years ago, we gained a lot under the from adult care formula, which then Conservative government actually then abandoned. So every time it looks like this council's winning, there's somebody else over there who are doing their utmost to make sure we don't. So if we could stress and ask that the executive and particularly the leader has got a lot of work to do to make sure he fights our corner and make sure that these potentially better news we're going to get is kept and the others don't persuade ministers to go back to the old ways. So I think a plea, it's looking much more promising, very early days, and we've had it snatched away from us before. So I think the leader has a battle on his hands and I know he'll be working hopefully with other rural counties. But you look at the figures, we are, us and Kent are massive winners under the current proposals. There are some losers and they'll be doing their utmost to make sure we don't get that money because they want it. So I hope that committee would agree that we send a message to the executive and leader that we understand that and we support him in his efforts to make sure that we retain the extra money, which we hopefully will get.
Thank you. councillor Hill? Any further questions?
Thank you. Page 35 talks about the 10-year capital programme, investments of 758 million over the next 10 years. So it was quite clear at the most recent elections that one of the big campaigning points was the level of borrowing and spending by Lincolnshire County Council. I think all members have been made quite clear that was one of the key talking points. Do we feel that three quarters of a billion pounds over the next 10 years is particularly appropriate, given the message given to us by the people of Lincolnshire? Is that not excessive?
So clearly, that was the budget set by the previous administration and approved at full council in February 25. As part of our budget setting process for future years, we would always do a review of the capital programme. And if there was any changes to that capital programme that was required by council, then that would be reflected in the future years programme. But clearly, that's a decision to be made by councillors. I think probably some of the key things to remember is some of the work in the future years of the capital programme has been committed to and is maybe in flight, so might be difficult to retract from. We have a responsibility to maintain our assets and provide assets where we've got service delivery. So things like fire service require fire engines. So that will be part of that discussion for February council and clearly members up to the run into that to make a decision about what the future programme looks like.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for your questions and comments. I now close our discussion of this item. Actions proposed in report to consider report determines whether the board support the recommendations to the executive set out on page 31 and to agree any comments by the board to be passed to the executive on this item. Suggested proposal, I move that the board supports the recommendation to the executive as detailed on page 31 of the report, i.e. move that a summary of our comments be passed to the executive for the consideration on the 2nd of September. Do I have a second, councillor French? Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? I believe that's passed. Right, okay.
Mister Chairman?
Sorry, yes, councillor Dilks?
Thank you, thank you. I just wonder, with apologies, as I explained earlier to you, I have to leave at 12.
That's fine, councillor Dilks.
A meeting in another place. I did have a contribution I wanted to make if possible on the next item, item 11, the overview and scrutiny annual report. I wondered if you'd consider turning those item 11 and 10 round and taking the overview and scrutiny report next. Thank you.
Yes. Well, that's so we don't forget to go back. So, I guess that's quite an important one here. So we'll just quickly jump over to the, yeah, save us some money. Item number 12, overview and scrutiny annual report. That's the one, isn't it, councillor Dilks? This item can be found on pages 109 and 123 of the agenda pack and presents the draft scrutiny annual report for 2025, which reflects an activity and scrutiny committees as well as future plans. The report will be submitted for final approval at the council on the 12th of September. This report will be presented by Nicola Carver. Sorry, Nicola, I've jumped you in there.
Thank you, Chairman. Not really much to say apart from that, other than it will be, it's here to be considered in draft form and for you to submit a final version to the meeting of the county council on the 12th of September. And that due to changes in the overview and scrutiny structure agreed by the county council on the 23rd of May, this annual report is a look forward to the upcoming year and covers the first couple of meetings and key future topics for each of the new scrutiny committees. The boards therefore invited to agree the submission of the annual report with or without amendment to council on the 12th for final approval.
Thank you, Nicky. Thanks for dropping in there quick. councillor Dilks?
You're very kind. Thank you, Nicola, and thank you, Chairman. It's just on that point that... It's just on that point that Nicola makes, this report is clearly a look forward and it never used to be. And I'm really looking for the explanation as to what's changed, you know, I appreciate we've got a new administration. But if you look at the all previous scrutiny reports, they were annual reports and they covered the financial year and they looked, if I turn to the, I've got the last year's one that was presented to the council in September last year, twenty twenty-four, and it was the overview and scrutiny annual report twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. This year's one, the draft one that we've got before us, is simply talks about the year twenty twenty-five. What's happened to twenty twenty-four and the achievements or otherwise of scrutiny in the previous year? Because if you look at the introduction to this report last year, it says, "The annual report is an opportunity to highlight the scrutiny work that has taken place throughout the last council year. The report focuses on the key successes and achievements of overview and scrutiny over the twelve-year period, May twenty-three to twenty-four." I think that was a useful exercise and it was a good report that was presented last year. And this draft report today is clearly not of the same ilk. It is clearly setting out to achieve something different, I believe, and it is more of a focus, as Nicola says, a look forward, more of a prospectus for the future. Like many people here, I'm sure all of us, value scrutiny and actually to review what we do each year, I think is important and has a value. But there's no explanation in the draft and I just wonder if there could be and if it could be looked at with some sort of recognition of the scrutiny that has taken place over the previous year. I accept, you know, whatever, but I just think that is important. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you councillor Dylks.
Thank you, chairman. Thanks councillor Dylks for making mention of that. A view was taken that because the current structure had changed, looking back as well as looking forward might reduce some of the clarity around the current council's intentions and its scrutiny performance. So that was the rationale.
Yeah, I've got to say, who took the decision? Thank you. Is that an officer decision or?
Yes, that would be Nigel West, head of Democratic Services.
Okay, thank you for your explanation. At least we've got one, thank you.
Thank you councillor Dylks. Any further questions? Councillor Brooks?
Thank you, chair. What improvements are planned in public engagement with scrutiny work? Thank you.
Apologies, may you repeat the question?
Sorry, I was a bit quick. What improvements are planned in public engagement with scrutiny work?
May I respond to the committee through Nigel West's head of Democratic Services after the meeting on that and provide it to all members? I think all members of scrutiny committees may wish to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Actions suggested in report, I consider to consider and comment on the draft scrutiny annual report and to agree the submission of the scrutiny annual report, whether or without amendment to the meeting of the council, county council on the twelfth of September for final approval. I move that the board endorse the report at our satisfaction to be recorded further detail contained in this snapshot of scrutiny activity and I ask that the report be submitted. Without amendments, can you please raise your hand if you agree? Those against? Any abstentions? I believe that's carried.
Mister Chairman, thank you very much indeed for making that amendment, adjusting the agenda. I'm going to leave and give my apologies, and it is sincere apologies, as a son of North Eichem, which is the next item, but thank you.
Thank you councillor Dylks. Agenda eleven. North Eichem Relief Road Scheme Update and Full Business Case Submission. The next pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages between seventy-nine and one oh seven of the agenda pack. This report offers an update on the progress of this scheme and files a draft of the full business case. The executive is due to make a decision on the proposals on the second of September. This report will be presented by Andy Gutherson, executive director for place, Sam Edwards, head of highways, infrastructure and laboratory services. Andy Gutherson and Sam Edwards, would you like to present the paper?
Yes, good morning. So the paper gives you an update on where we've got to the project and we're getting to a key milestone of ready to submit the final business case and therefore within one of the recommendations, and I won't read out all the recommendations, but is the seeking approval to submit that. But I thought I'll take out the person, points of the paper and then I'll invite questions after that. So some of the key milestones that have been progressed to get to this stage is that the planning application was submitted towards the end of twenty twenty-three and was granted in May twenty-four. Following that, the next stage of the project was to secure the legal orders. Now, the legal orders is some technical highways to do with sideways orders, but the main other orders is the CPO, the compulsory purchase orders to allow the land to be acquired. The reason they're important in that stage is in order for us to submit the final business case to the Department for Transport, we have a number of items that we have to have achieved prior to that, one of which is to secure planning, one of which is to have the right to, well, the land to acquire to do where the works. And that's why the order is as it is. So I just want to talk a little bit about the planning and the orders process, so to give some context. So the planning was a relatively, for a scheme of this scale, was certainly not straightforward, but we had a very limited number of objections to that, which as I say, for a scheme of this, of the scale and impact is really positive and I think reinforces the desire and support from the public towards this and from stakeholders. Moving into the inquiry, again, to give you an idea of scale of schemes of this impact, you would normally on other schemes receive up to four hundred objections, you use around two to three hundred objections. We received twelve objections to this scheme. During the inquiry and in advance of it, five of those objections were removed in advance and then during the inquiry, at the end of it, there were only two objections left. And of those two objections, neither party turned up and neither did the parties make any written communication as to their objections. So the inspector is now in the process of writing the report. I believe it hopefully should be done by the end of this week, as they talked about at the end of August, but that is out of our control. Following that process, the inspector then submits the paper to the Secretary of State to decide on whether to grant the orders. I clearly can't predetermine the decisions and we don't see the inspector's report, but the manner that I've just explained and the support, we feel very confident on the outcome of that. And because of the outcome, we've moved ahead with the final business case. So the process, you can't submit the final business case until you get the orders confirmed. So we're in a sort of critical path here, sort of domino effect. But to streamline, as we've done for this project all the way along, to streamline that process, we've been submitting elements of the final business case to the D F T for the last few months. And I'm happy to say that that's been a relatively positive process going back and forth, but we'll be able to submit the final, final business case, subject to the approval of the executive and subject to the orders being confirmed, which we hope for around middle of September, but that's not in our control. Now, turning to the final business case, there are, it's a very extensive piece of, or extensive document, and it is the final stage in order to secure the one hundred and ten million for the project. There's two critical parts to that, although there's many, many parts. One is outlining the economic benefits or the overall benefits to the project and that goes through a, what's called a green book central government process and there's five business cases that form the overall case. And just to stress on that, that's in the report in item one point two, this scheme is generating over eight hundred million pounds of benefits, which in terms results in a benefit to cost ratio of over four. Now, to give you some context to what that means, the D F T or any funding body generally don't accept anything under two. So two is, two is designators high value for money. We were at two point four, but due to changes within the guidance of how it's used and the new Lincoln traffic model we built a couple of years ago, showed that the traffic has increased and is going to increase at a more accelerated rate, therefore the benefits are greater. So our benefit cost ratio is now over four. And what that means is for every pound you spend, you get four pound back. It's as simple as that. So I think that's important to sort of outline. But of course, the other side of that within the paper is we have seen cost increases, which we've detailed throughout the paper. We've categorised those into two sorts of elements, one which is scope change, things that either weren't incorporated or weren't reasonably expected to happen or have been acted upon the project. The other element is things that have changed. From the very onset of the scheme, we didn't want to say the scheme will cost X, because the only thing I can say is it won't cost exactly that X. It could be a penny more, penny more, a pound more, pound less. So we gave a range of what those costs are. And within the things within that range, we've moved in net about, I think it's about two point seven million as an increase, which is a mixture of some increases and some decreases. But I must stress, there has been over eleven million pound of scope change, which we've identified within the paper. Moving to the funding element of that, that has resulted in just under fourteen million pounds of cost increase to the project and the paper goes into the lifting that contribution. The D F T, as the process is written, is not obliged to increase their contribution and therefore the paper outlines that there would need to be an additional contribution from the county council towards that as it stands now. Before I finish, I just want to also confirm the last thing is that this paper is not seeking a decision to commit this money. It is not seeking to enter into contract at this stage. There will be one final key decision paper toward the end of this year, start of next year, which, subject to all the things I've gone through, is now, is then approved, will be coming back to the executive to say that we're now in the process to place an order. And should that, all these things carry on as planned the programme, we will be looking to start in February next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Andy Gutherson, have you got any? No, that's fine. In that case, I will now move on with the board's debate. Have we got anybody? Would like to ask any questions? Apart from?
Just one, chairman.
We'll start with councillor Hill.
Just one. Obviously, notwithstanding what Sam's just said, obviously this will then secure one hundred and ten million pounds from the government, because this is the bid effectively putting in. Presumably, we are then, we are committing now, and that's a question, to providing the other presumably ninety-odd million pounds which will be required. So the question is, what are the options for us to fund that money?
Good question. Michelle?
Which is why I stay for this item. So as per the current programme, there is a two hundred million pound scheme in our programme. One hundred and ten, as you say, is funded by D F T grant. It's probably worth noting that we have already been drawing down on that grant, so although we've not had official confirmation of the grant, and we won't get that until the business case is submitted, the D F T have been providing us with grant, which if this is halted now, will be liable to repay. The ninety million is through our capital internal borrowing or capital receipts and any other way that's set out in our capital programme that we have options to fund. In terms of the additional requirement that Sam's highlighted in the report, the only option for that is either capital receipts, reserves, revenue contributions or external borrowing.
Thank you, Michelle. Can I ask a question on that? In fact, probably to Sam as well. So I know that the D F T obviously originally offered the one hundred and ten million back in twenty twenty, when it was going to cost one hundred and fifty-five. At that point, they must have had a formula roughly saying that they were going to commit seventy percent of the project. I think I know the answer to this one, but why has it not been reviewed now the cost has gone up so high? Because we've gone from putting in only forty-five million to putting in ninety million for the same project and obviously everybody's costs have gone up. Sam?
Yeah, so the process, just as you explain, it was based on seventy percent of the, that was the large local majors bid. The D F T have a process that upon agreement of the outlined business case, they do not revisit their contribution. That is a way that they work. It is down to the scheme developer to own all risk beyond that process. So we have spoken to the D F T about, to explain this very situation and that is the message that we've received back.
So we can't cancel the application and go back and put another one in? He's in the same rules.
I'm afraid not, no.
Okay, I answered that one. Going back to Michelle about, I presume where we get the extra money from is going to depend on whether or not the money we have in reserves is getting an interest rate of, let's say for example, of four percent, where borrowing may be five percent. So I assume the decision about how much we may use in reserves compared to how much we borrow will come down to the actual borrowing interest rates and whether it's better to use our own money than it is to borrow it.
So ultimately, we will need to borrow at some point externally. The interim position is whether the interest rates determine whether we use our own cash balances first, because that's more cash advantageous or interest advantageous and that's clearly what Karen's been doing through our treasury strategy for the last couple of years. We will get to a point where because of our cash balances, we need to borrow regardless of rates to reflect the spend. We've been doing some voluntary revenue provision over the last few years to kind of counteract the impacts of big schemes, so that will support us as well. But clearly, the borrowing requirement, ideally, we would do it when it's most advantageous in terms of the rates from the P W O B loan board, but clearly as well, we need to be able to have cash to manage the organisation and pay our bills and stuff like that, so.
Thanks. Yeah, I think waiting as long as possible might be a good idea, current rates. Any other questions? Councillor Brooks?
Thank you, chair. What safeguards are being put in place to prevent further cost escalation?
Sam?
Okay, so we briefly talked about some other projects earlier under Michelle's items that we've had difficulties with and it's worth stressing that we have changed, we went through a lessons learned right at the start of this project and picked a very different commissioning strategy. So whereas the previous projects have been a sort of design bid and build with the client, the council sat in on commissioning the two, we went out to the market on schemes of the scale and got feedback about different ways of doing it. That was quite an extensive process and we concluded that of these types of schemes, it's far better to do it as a design and build. And it doesn't, and I'm not going to sit here, nobody can sit here and say that it removes all risk, of course it doesn't, but it does reduce a level of risk in the fact that we are not engaging in the designer. We are engaging in the contractor, the contractor has a designer. If there are failures with the design, it's not the council's interest, that's for the contractor and the designer to deal with. And these are many of the issues that underline some of the other problems we identified on the other projects that we've got, where we're the owners of the designers and the contractors. Whereas in this scenario, where I think Dave talked earlier about compensation events and on his paper and changes, it mitigates and limits that impact to Lincolnshire because you have that arm length. In addition, we have a whole team that is sort of starting to, well, being pulled together throughout the delivery of this and this will ramp up as we get towards construction. So that's not only a supervision team, but commercial managers, quantity surveyors, that type of normal team that manages the cost throughout.
Thank you, Sam. Councillor Davies?
Thank you. Just before I ask my questions, I think I'd like to pay tribute to Sam and the team on this project. It predates even me with the purchase of some of the properties on Station Approach, Station Road. It is a great scheme and it has got to this stage and actually remaining in the government's funding cycle when other schemes haven't, shows testament to the efforts the team have put in and I think it remains, or it certainly did at O B C level, the most favourable project in the East Midlands to a point where even Midlands Connect were saying, of all the schemes in the East Midlands, this is the one that represents the best value for money. I've read two sets of questions. One of these- One of these really requests for information. I'd be fascinated to see the differential between the O B C and the F B C, particularly around where some of these gains have come with regards to the benefit cost ratio. I think that would be quite interesting. I think there are lessons to be learned there as well. When we look broader across the county, coming back to councillor Robinson's question about investment in the county, my answer to that is we need to see more investment in the county, because we need more infrastructure, we need more roads in places, we need more schools, we need more potentially, need more assets, but we need to play the game as well as we can. And I think design and build is an answer to that. At the other end, I, and here's a phrase I never thought I'd hear myself say, I actually feel sorry for Sam and the team to a certain extent, because a lot of what, and you just alluded to it, councillor, a lot of what they are forced to deal with is done to them. And I think the list, if you turn to it at the beginning of the report, is a travesty, really, for how we build things in the U K now. I can barely contemplate Anglia Water deciding they got their costs wrong by fifty percent without wanting to kind of spit my tap water out. But I would like to drill into this bat issue in some detail, because on the face of it, it represents an extraordinary amount of money, taxpayers' money, the latest for a capital scheme in the U K, based on a risk which the ecologists a few years ago were telling us wasn't there. They have now decided that the barberstail bat is now seen in the area. So it would be useful to know, for example, how many of these bats have been found in the area? And, you know, what is there? How at risk are they? I'd also like to know, in terms of the remedial measures you've been asked to put in, I'm assuming by Natural England, one of the great Tony Blair legacy arrangements, I'm guessing we don't have any choice that we either have to do what they say, or they will just stop this scheme going ahead. But what's the measure of effectiveness of these things? I mean, how do you, dare I ask, direct a bat through a tunnel? I mean, I can't even believe I'm asking the question candidly. But I think it should be asked with respect.
Traffic lights.
Yeah, I mean, you can't put up a sign, because maybe Braille, I don't know. But no, but they can't see, can they?
Thank you, councillor Davies.
Sorry.
Sam, if you can answer that question, you'd be doing well.
Well, I never thought I'd be a bat expert in my career, but I have learnt a lot over the last eighteen months or so. Just to pick out the first question about the difference, sort of the uplift from the outline business case to the full business case, I clearly don't have that information in detail today, but I can seek that. One of the key things that I've got into that is since the outline business case to the new one, as I mentioned, we have a new Lincoln traffic model, because they're only valid for about six years, and that's far more detailed than the previous one, that we can pull out greater levels of traffic data. In addition, there was a review of the central Lincolnshire local plan, and that brought in additional housing and allocations within that, which can get fed into the benefits that it's unlocking or mitigating congestion, for want of a better phrase. Moving on to the bats, so as a responsible developer, when we're bringing forward schemes, we have to align with all legislation, and there is a lot of it of schemes of this scale. One of the things that we have to do is produce an environmental impact assessment for the planning application. That is a very, very large document, and it's all in the public domain, as it was included in the planning application. Part of that process is we need to search for vulnerable and protected species. During that process, we discovered the barberstail bats. So there are seventeen species of bats in the U K and of two that are of an extreme vulnerable status, that this is one of them. This is the furthest north they've ever been recorded in the U K, which is good for some, not so much for others, but this is the furthest north that they've been found. Once they were discovered, we have an obligation under the Wildlife and Countryside Act to not, so you can't cause deliberate harm to species of this nature. Once we're aware of it, as we're required to be, we can't realistically bring forward a scheme where it causes harm. And at the moment, they follow, to answer, rather than signs, they follow the hedge lines. So they follow the echolocation of hedge lines and go through. So where the road severs between it, basically, they're going to be flying into the side of a vehicle or over the road, because the hedges the other side and so forth, and they will continue their flight paths. So that's why we now know that there's a vulnerable, we will cause harm if we do no mitigation. So we spoke to Natural England, rather than trying to sort of go with it, we actually spoke to the people as part of the process to say, what is the reasonable level of mitigation? Obviously, you go into that with a level of trepidation when you see some of the things that I'm sure we've all seen in the press with a H S two and a billion pound on the bat tunnel of, are we getting into this kind of process? I have to say, the conversation was far more pragmatic and proportionate to the flight paths that we have. And we actually have five or six flight paths at different locations across the route, and each of them having slightly different mitigation depending on the intensity. So we incorporated those mitigations in, rather than putting something else or not putting anything, and then getting objections. And I would bring this committee's attention to the Norwich bypass in Norfolk, which attracted a huge amount of conjecture around it, went back and forth for almost four years before the scheme was abandoned on these exact bats that were found. So instead of going through that process, we went straight to the statute body that would be reviewing it in that pragmatic value. As a result of that, we received no objections and can move forward with the scheme from a planning perspective. With regards to whether this is appropriate, I think was one of the questions, it is. It is, it is, it is an appropriate mitigation, and no one's saying that this isn't very costly because of, because of course it is. But the legislation is clear, and it is a legal requirement for any developer or the county council to follow it. Thank you.
Councillor Davies?
If I can just push back a little bit on that, specifically, how many of these bats have been seen in the area? And what evidence is there? And this may not be, I mean, you're not an ecologist, Sam, so forgive me, but what evidence is there that this four point three million pounds worth of taxpayers' money is going to save those bats, bearing in mind there are other roads in the area? This isn't a new, the concept of a road will be not be alien to a bat?
So no, I don't know the exact values of the bats here and there. What I can say is that they require onsite surveys. So there are ecologists who go out at the right seasonal period, because you've got to check whether they're roosting compared to, which we don't want and we haven't got, compared to flight paths and things like that. So there have been evidence, they have been recorded as per the requirement within the Protection Act that's there. So there is, although I don't have those numbers, there is clear evidence, and that was all included in the environmental statement that went forward with the planning application. As far, sorry, just one, what's the second part of the question?
Just what is the evidence that these mitigations work?
Okay, yeah. So as part of the Natural England, because this is such a specialist area, they actually, they bring in external parties to support them in how they respond to this. I think for memory, there's only four experts in the U K that deal with these types of bats. So we spoke directly with those, and the evidence and the mitigations put forward is based on projects that they've used elsewhere and projects that they've seen which has mitigated. So for example, the Bat Bridge, as I said earlier, they follow the hedges. This bridge will be grassed over and hedges will be planted on top of the bridge. So they continue to follow flight paths over and under. As with the Bat Tunnel that we talked about, the large four meters by four meters box culvert, the hedges will be replanted to direct them through and out. I'm not an ecologist, I can't sit here and say this will protect this one but not that one. All I can do is confirm with the experts in this field as a requirement through the planning process that indicate, clearly indicate that this is appropriate mitigation for the presence of these bats.
Thank you, councillor Davies?
Just very quickly then, so it's your professional view that without these mitigations, this project wouldn't go forward?
So without these mitigations, the scheme would have, the Natural England will, I'm not even going to say almost certainly, they will have objected to this because we don't align with the legislation. The planning authority would have, I believe, would have a very difficult position, other than to recommend a refusal of the planning application, because it doesn't adhere with legal legislation. Whether the committee would have granted it or not, I don't know. But I'm adamant that this would have been the price, and had it had been granted even through those processes, it would have been subject to a judicial review and most likely successful in that review, because we're simply not adhering with current legal legislation.
Thank you, Sam. Can I just ask a question going on from the situation with, with obviously the bats? Have we conducted our own independent review ourselves? Because it seems to me that they've got their people they use, and therefore they might be slightly biased. So we've looked, so we've done our scrutiny on this as best as we possibly can, because I find it a bit odd that a species, you say there's not some money around, I have the, you know, I take a suspicion that if they're all, if we build the road and all of a sudden there's no hedgerow there, they'll just go in a different direction. You know, it's a lot of money to spend. Obviously, we have to do our scrutiny to make sure that if this is the only option we've got and we've got no other option, we don't rely on a quango to tell us what we should and shouldn't be doing. I'm not saying they'll look at a different review, I'm not saying that. But if we've got our own independent review to look at it, because I've read reports of different road projects at different councils that have done this, and bridges and all sorts, and have not been used. I think nature has a way of adapting, and if quite simply the bats can't adapt, they wouldn't be here. They would have died off years ago. But that's my opinion. But have we got a review or can we do an independent review?
So I mentioned earlier about how we were not surprised, but the pragmatic view was pragmatic, it was better than we were expecting. So I mentioned earlier about our design and build contractor. So we have Balfour Beatties as our contractor, their principal designer is a company called Ramble, and they engage a company called T E P for the planning expertise. All of those three companies also have ecologist experts, albeit not the specialists in barberstail, but have a lot of experience of delivering schemes elsewhere in the country that have these. They were all consistently of the opinion that they would have recommended greater levels of mitigation than what we're actually proposing. So it's difficult, because we can't vet this, because we're not experts in it. But when you go to the field that you are in, and through three independents plus the expert is sort of saying, this is the right, in fact, this is the lower level of mitigation than they would normally expect, we are, as a responsible developer such of this project, we believe that is proportionate to the level that we would need to incorporate. With regards to rerouting, I simply don't know. I'm not, as much as I've learnt about bats, I don't know the rerouting. However, even the only, the way I would expect to be rerouted is through harm. But the minute you cause harm, you are now not adhering with the legislation, because you are deliberately causing harm to the bats. Even if that harm then changes behaviour, you've still deliberately knowingly caused a harm which is not in adherence with the legislation.
Last one last question. With the extra relief rose we've just done recently, have we had any issues of bats and that bit? Because obviously, there seems to be this area.
We did have some bats, and it was in Greatwell Quarry. Thankfully, not the same bats, not to the same level of protection, but they weren't flight paths, they were roosting within the crevices of Greatwell Quarry that's there. We also had issues with nesting birds and lizards around that same area. So we had a two week period to actually, within the whole year, to mitigate that. And for those that remember, there was a period of time that we scaled the front of the, during the right time when they're not there, we scaled the front of the quarry and then sheeted over to stop them from coming back in. But as far as these bats and flight paths, no, we've not incorporated this issue elsewhere.
Okay. Going back to the last point is, so are we, and I'm going to put it forward, obviously, for the executive to look into this, can we employ our own independent? Because all these companies are all doing reports to go back to a company that's going to build it, which to me isn't independent. An independent is somebody who's got no connection to anything else. So personally, I mean, is that not right?
So to be fair, we're the client, and we have instructed these companies to work on our behalf within the contract. So they are, they don't want to put these bridges in any more than we do. This is a requirement. So I deem that those countries, those companies are impartial. They are, they have no connection to Natural England at all.
However, they are charging us to do it. So.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. So they're not independent. Right, okay, moving on. Councillor Collier?
Thank you. I think you've asked most my questions, though, but thank you very much. I personally don't like bats very much, although Batman isn't so bad. But seriously, is there somewhere else this budget can come from? Has that been investigated as well?
To date, no, we haven't. This is a scheme cost, so it is part of the scheme and therefore should be carried by the scheme. If the council wants to look into additional funding, then we can look into that. But I think the opportunities are difficult, as we talked about earlier, about the one hundred and ten million pound increase. It's unlikely the D F T will increase that without some level of pressure within that process.
Thank you. Councillor Woodruff?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Sam. Yeah, just obviously, still on the bat subject, it does seem that independent studies have shown that forty to fifty percent of the bats still just cross the road dangerously. They don't use the tunnels or the bridges in general. But regarding that and regarding wildlife in general, obviously, with the national government plans to ease regulations, make building easier. Should those legislations be changed, are there plans in place to therefore instant cost savings, not necessarily scrap them? But whether we look at just, you know, downgrading it to maybe some enhanced fencing or rerouting options, like you say, or is it going to be, once this is in place, this is what's going to happen? If the legislation changes, are we going to adapt with it?
So if the legislation changes, then we have the option to revisit our scheme if there is no longer requirement for said bridges. But it's not a case of, unfortunately, just taking the bridge away. We would then have to issue what's called a section seventy three amendment to our planning application, which will then go through that process. That's quite a lengthy process. And then you'd have to potentially revisit the legal orders and the land take and all the other infrastructure around the area. The other challenge is that change to legislation is not quick. And actually, you know, as per the current program, which is starting in February next year, one of the first, we don't sort of do it in sections as we go along, you start the whole job at once. So you strip the whole site in one go, so you do all the earthwork shifting in one go to get the economies of scale. It is very likely that if legislation was to change and incorporating, you would have to go back and revisit your planning application amongst many other documents. A lot of that work will have started, if not been complete by that period.
Thank you. Councillor Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. For me, it's astounding, really, that I can't get a zebra crossing outside the school. So maybe I should get some bats there, I think.
Bats, fine, get some bats.
But seriously, my question is, the hedgerow that they're going to follow across the road, I'm hoping these are all going to be fully formed and planted before the roads even started, because otherwise, if they're not, then they're going to have nowhere to follow, they're just going to go across the road. Thank you.
Yes, the planting regime is that for this particular area, where its boundary, we would tend to put in, you know, small saplings and so forth, because there's an ecology reason for this, they'll go in as mature vegetation.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yes, councillor Parkinson?
Thank you so much. Two questions, if I may. The first one is around the bat tunnel. So it says it doubles up as a four by four meter drainage culvert. As we're all aware, drains tend to get blocked quite often. So as, of course, we get a lot of rain, there's flooding risks there as well, would that not present an issue further down the line that if, it would actually present a risk to those bats by having that double as a drainage culvert? Because if that was to get blocked or does to be flooding, it then wouldn't work for them.
Signs and life jackets. So the original, so prior to discovering the bats, there was a culvert there before for purely drainage purposes, and that was a very modest sized culvert through there. Rather than building an additional, and it happened to be the flight path was above it. So rather than building an additional structure next to it, we enlarged the size of the existing culvert to encompass both requirements. So in many ways, as a culvert, a four by four meter is massive for the drainage elements that we're talking about, which is far more modest. So the likelihood of that being blocked is not realistic, thankfully. So I don't think that there's any issues here. And of course, it will be a highway drain, the structure itself will be a highway, so we'll come under its own sort of maintenance regime. But we don't expect it to block because the size is so much bigger than what's required for drainage purposes.
Then just the second question, just to play devil's advocate, if we didn't do this, and we said we're If we didn't do this and we said we're not doing it, what are the cost implications to L C C as we stand today?
Okay, so if we, do you mean not do the bridges or?
At all, don't move forward with the relief road, what would the cost implications be?
Okay, I understand the question now. So up until now, we've got the £110 million, but we are allowed to draw down elements of that funding to inform the process of submitting the final business case. But as I sort of outlined at the start, in order to submit the final business case, you need detailed design, you need planning, you need legal orders, you need all these kind of things. So the vast majority of expense that has taken place so far has been from that £110 million that's encapsulated within the overall costs. So we have spent, I think, around £21 million to get this to this point. And nineteen million of that is, or approximately nineteen million of that is from the D F T, £110 million. Should the, let's look through the unlikely scenario that the scheme not secure orders or the D F T don't approve the final business case, then the scheme potentially ends and it's white clean. Should the county council choose not to progress with the scheme any further, the county council will need to pay that nineteen million pounds back. So the cost of not progressing any further with the direct cost would be the nineteen million pounds. But the indirect cost is that the central Lincolnshire local plan is, or elements is completely compliant or reliant on delivering the scheme. So the southwest quadrant of two and a half thousand houses can't be brought forward without this scheme. And there's many other attributes across the Lincoln area that is dependent on this scheme. So those are the non-direct, but the direct cost is around nineteen million that we would have to pay back.
Thank you Sam, Michelle.
So if I can just add to that as well, clearly these costs are going through our capital programme at the moment and being managed as we've talked about through borrowing. But if the scheme stops through our choice and the nineteen million pounds is owed back to the D F T, then because there is no asset in place, we cannot capitalise that cost, so it will be an immediate revenue cost pressure.
Thank you Michelle, councillor French.
Thank you Chair. I do agree with the chairman's earlier comments. And to go even deeper, I don't think we should trust companies who we're paying to tell us that their evaluations say that we need to pay them more money. I think that by that definition, they're not impartial and that an independent investigation of some sort should take place. I mean, what alternatives have been considered? Luckily bats, one thing that's possible is their frequency range of hearing is so high, a speaker system could be placed along the road that doesn't disturb anybody but bats, playing, you know, F off in bat frequency language, whatever, to keep them away. I mean, that would be probably fifty pounds for a speaker system every so often along the road. I mean, seriously, what has been considered as an alternative? That's a lot of money just for those constructions.
Thank you.
So the first point about the independent is, the problem is, is anybody that we go to, we would be their client. You know, we don't have an employee in Lincolnshire with this element. So if we went out to a further third party, then we would have the same scenario that we're paying somebody and we have that same relationship. So it's very difficult and the pool is smaller than you would expect as well. But the consistency that we've had across this is, gives us confidence as professionals into this, that these are the appropriate things. As far as alternatives are considered, there are different things in different locations. So for example, at I think it's two or three locations where the, although the flight path is established, it's a relatively low level that's been observed and recorded. We were able to, as an appropriate mitigation, put in large amounts of vegetation, so higher trees, mature trees, so they fly up and over and back down. But that's not appropriate as per the guidance, the legislation, where there's a much greater density of them. Hence you need to, rather than, if you think about you're removing the risk by putting the bridge in, whereas you're limiting it by doing the vegetation. So we've got different measures at different locations and the guidance that we've had from professional experts in this area is that this is pragmatic and reasonable for the issues that we're faced.
Just to jump on to that, so people have done the same thing in the past and it's worked, but it's cost a lot of money and we're not willing to try something else is what you're saying, that might be cheaper.
The issue of trying something else is that National, is that Natural England through advice will likely not accept the planning application because it's not established. There's no proof that anything else will work, therefore they will reject the, or recommend for the application to be rejected.
So if part of that money was spent on proving something else would work that is cheaper, would a saving, a cost potentially be made there?
At this stage, I would say no, because in order to take these bats, to take the bats out, you would have to go back through a section seventy-three planning amendment. That will take the best part of six to nine months because you also have to revisit the environmental statement and so forth. And potentially only to find that the scheme, that the amended provisions are still not adequate. And this is exactly where the scheme I mentioned earlier in Norwich got to, is they went back and forth, eventually got to greater provisions than what we're putting in and it was still rejected. So we're better to get hold of it and address it. And then when you look at things like inflation costs, around £200 million, if you were to say construction inflation can get up to four percent, working that back, you're talking about six to seven hundred thousand pound a month in inflation costs for any delay that goes through that process. So I feel that if we go back and try to amend this, from the advice that I've had, I don't think we will be successful. And I think the net cost will be greater than what we're seeing now.
Thank you Sam, thirty-four kilohertz is their frequency. Did some research. councillor Chain.
Thank you for the opportunity. Prompted by the question on costings, it strikes me, do we, have we yet signed any contracts? Do we have any contractual obligations and would it cost us to back out of those?
So to be clear, this paper is not asking or is not seeking approval of any commitment of money. This is purely seeking the approval to submit a final business case. Now, I'm very confident in the success of the final business case, but it may not be successful. In which case there is no issue to resolve, I suppose. But we are not seeking any contribution at this stage. The contract that we're in with Balfour Beattie is through a framework called Scape. There are various gateways as you go through. So you're in the contract from day one, hence why there was a key decision, I can't remember, back in twenty-two or twenty-three, to allow us to enter into it. But the last milestone is what we will be coming back to the executive at the end of this year, starting next year, is the last milestone which basis says go, start building. So at this stage, if we didn't want to progress, there is no contractual obligations beyond that.
Thank you Sam, I've got another question. Very rare for me to ask lots of questions. Obviously, it's been going on a long time. I'm from Lincoln, I remember when the first part of the bypass was built, very exciting. It's taken ages and ages and ages to, this is the final part, it's massively vital. Why has it taken till now for us to get to a position where we're actually doing it? If we've got a quote back in twenty-twenty, why did we not go ahead with it then? Why is it now that we're going ahead with it? It's obviously had the effect of costing a lot more money, nobody can see the future, but why has it taken this long to get to this point?
Yeah, it's a difficult question to answer and you'll be alarmed when I say, this is one of the fastest developing schemes in the UK of this scale, at the time that it has taken. It's sort of a worrying process. The process to delivering infrastructure to the scale is lengthy, it's as simple as that. We have to go through so many statutory processes to get these things approved, that many schemes can be in the gestation period for ten years before they actually get to site. So I appreciate it's a very long time, but all the process we have to go through, they're sort of briefly outlined and is all in the programme. They have statutory timescales to them that we have to adhere to. So unfortunately, the processes make this take a long time to deliver schemes of this scale.
Thirty years. I just, obviously, you know, if you look at the map, it's been a half a ring road for a long, long time. We've obviously got the other part, but I've never really got to understand why it's taken so long.
Sorry, I apologise, I thought you meant from when the outline business case was approved to now. So from when the first part, it's purely funding. And if we remember back when the Western Bypass was built, Lincoln was much, much smaller, with much lesser demand for it before the university was built and everything sort of went from that and it's grown sort of exponentially from that. So there wasn't necessarily the need. And when you're looking at a competitive bid process, as it's always been, there has always been greater needs elsewhere in the UK that you're bidding against, which comes back to the benefit to cost ratio. But as we can see now, the benefit to cost ratio is really, really high, which indicates we're at that precipice point where the city needs it. So it's, of course, it would have been better delivered many years ago, but there is a scale of when you do it against the measurement stage. Having said that, the best part of almost twenty years ago, when the route was aligned, because it was very clear that if we don't fix a route, it will all get built and you'll never deliver it. So that route was fixed and at that time, we, once it's fixed, properties that are along that route are subject to, well, they can apply for, they're subject to blight. And at that point, we actually purchased those property on Station Road. So we purchased them at that stage, I've been renting them out since, but they will come down. So there's been a commitment to this route and to the scheme for over twenty years. But it's making the funding and the business case line up.
Thank you Sam, I will say one more thing. We'd probably best take the money as quick as we can before there's no money left in the kitty and she has to go to the IMF. Anyway, councillor Kelly has an exception, would you like to say something?
Sam, apologies, I'm sure you feel you've been beasted in regards to the bat situation. However, I have a question and I've just had a quick cursory look at legislation. And I am by no means an expert, however, things I have picked up is a lot of the language is a should as opposed to a must or will. So there is a difference between should, must and will etcetera. So are we mandated to, we must put these mitigating controls in place? Because when we manage risk, we also have to look at the costs of managing that risk and the costs of mitigating controls that are to be implemented. And if the cost of the controls is, we believe, you know, outweighs the liabilities associated with the mitigation, then one trumps the other normally. And so far as we can, you know, so far as is reasonably practicable, we can demonstrate sufficient controls and consideration has been given, then surely that should, you know, be fit for purpose.
So as far as the terminology within the document, I'm not going to say I'm an expert on that. I'm more knowledgeable than I ever was, but I'm not an expert on that document. What is very clear from communication with Natural England is without mitigation, whether that be should, could, must, they will object to the planning application. And through precedent set on other schemes like Norwich Bypass and many others, that will hold favour. And it's very likely that the, in fact, it's pretty much almost certain that the planning authority will have no choice but to recommend a refusal of that planning application. Go through what I explained, there's a J R and there's precedent set there where the J R has been successful and the planning application hasn't been upheld. So the problem is, is that regardless of how we determine the language, there was a requirement with presidents to say that if you don't do these things, you will not secure your planning application. And without a planning application, let alone we can't do this, we can't build it, but we also can't get the funding.
Apologies, come back on that though. But if the guidance says should and they're interpreting that as a must, then that, I would imagine, gives us an avenue to have a conversation, to explore that further. Because if it isn't mandating us to do it, then, you know, that should lead to a further conversation in order to ensure we get best value for money. And we try and mitigate so far as is reasonably practicable, you know, the issue in regards to the bats. But so far as is reasonably practicable regarding the costs.
So I'm very comfortable in saying that what we are doing adheres to the legislation, but I feel like we're getting into terminology of how it's incorporated. So I'd like to take that away and get some additional notes on that to come back. But I must stress, and I want to stress this committee, I am still very, very confident that this is the right proposal as per that's outlined in the environmental statement. But I'll get the exact terminology and the interpretation through case law to show that.
Thank you, and of course, it's only a proposal at the moment anyway, it could get declined. Andy Gutherson.
Just to endorse the points that Sam's been making and in the fear of being berated as a qualified town planner, the case law that Sam is referring to and the historical precedent, I would honestly and professionally advise, if we had not gone down the route that we've gone down, we wouldn't be sitting here today debating whether we're submitting a final business case. We'd probably still be working through the planning process and possibly wouldn't have even got to the point where we'd actually had the orders process continued. And in the context then of the overall cost of the scheme, as Sam's intimated, you'd be looking at a much more significant overall cost for the scheme at a point in the future. And as councillor Davis referred to before, the government might then have pulled the plug on their element of the funding as they have done from other schemes.
Thank you, any further questions? Thank you for your questions and comments, this now concludes our discussion of this item. Actions suggested in the report, I, to consider the report and determine whether the board support the recommendation to the executive set out on page eighty-two and to agree any comments by the board to be passed to the executive on this item. I move that the board suggests a recommendation to the executive as detailed on page eighty-two and I move that the summary of our comments to be passed to the executive with a consideration on the second of September. Do I have a second there? councillor Woodruff. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? I think that's passed. Okay. Confuse everybody, we're moving on to thirteen. Thank you councillor Finley. Overview and scrutiny management board work programme. Now it's time for the standard work programme item on our agenda, which is set out on pages one, two, five to one thirty-eight. This provides a board an opportunity to review work programme and suggest topics for future consideration. I would like to ask Nicola Carver, Member Service as a manager, for updates and changes on our work programme since the publication of this agenda pack.
Thank you Chairman, I'm happy to report there are no updates to the work programme. If you will note from page one, two, seven, that your next meeting will take place on the twenty-fifth of September. And Chair Thru, you are happy to take any additions or amendments the commission wish to make to the work plan.
Thank you. I'd like to invite members of the board to make any relevant questions. councillor Parkinson, do we have anybody? Have any questions on the work programme?
Not as far as I can see Chair, unless there's someone I'm missing, but I don't believe so. Yeah, shall we have one, shall we?
Go on then. councillor Hill, no, right. Suggestions, actions, a report to consider the report and make comments on the work programme. I move that the report to be received and noted. Oh, no changes to the report, which is great, with agreed amendments or no amendments. Can you please raise your hand if you agree? Thank you, that is agreed. Item fourteen, scrutiny committee work programmes. You can find the report setting on the scrutiny committee work programmes on pages one thirty-nine to one sixty-eight. This item is for the committee's information only. Can the board note the work programmes of the seven other scrutiny committees? As the next item on the agenda includes what local government law refers to as an exemption information, there is a proposal to exclude members of the public and press. Sorry councillor Hill.
On the previous item, are we not voting on that or commenting on it?
What, fourteen?
The scrutiny committee work programme.
Chairman, the report requests noting of the work programmes if members wish to comment or agree by acclamation.
Okay.
I do wish to comment, I'm sorry you threw down the goal of the chairman.
Would you like to comment?
Appendix D, page one fifty-four, Environment Scrutiny Committee. Members will recall, we had quite a lively debate on the abolition of the flood committee. And commitments were then given in that meeting that the frequency of the environment committee would increase to compensate for that. So unless I'm mistaken, the frequency hasn't increased, but I stand to be corrected. And just to clarify, obviously on the scrutiny committee, which will happen in September, there'll be other agencies in there'll be other agencies involved. So whenever else the environment committee meets, will those other agencies be invited? But I don't think the frequency has changed, but I might be wrong. So could I have a comment please?
So thank you very much councillor Hill. So I note that Andy's gone, and Andy would have the answer to the question. So I know that they have agreed a particular timeframe in for when the matter will be subject to discussion, and I know that they've also agreed a regular timing of when the multi-agency partners would also attend. But if it's acceptable, can I just get that written up and then sent round to everybody afterwards?
But to clarify, that the actual frequency of the meetings is every two months. So the commitment given at the full council has not been honoured.
Nikki, can I pass that on to you?
Thank you Chairman. So the Environment Scrutiny Committee meets at the same frequency as all the other scrutiny committees, I believe that, and I wouldn't want to answer for the comments that were made at council, but I believe the increase of frequency was in referral to a change of frequency from the meetings that were formally under the Environment Scrutiny Committee. So for example, those that address flood and water management.
We'll check and we'll provide a written response to you.
It's there, and the frequency hasn't changed. So, you know, I can't remember who made the statement, and it was partly convincing, but if I was that person from the Reform group who made that promise, I would now be asking some questions of officers, what's going on?
Chairman, I can confirm that previously, the remit that was referred to in terms of increased frequency was four meetings a year, and this meeting meets eight meetings a year.
I believe that's the case, that's why we increased it. Well, four from eight is an increase, isn't it?
No, this is, every other month, this committee. Meeting is every other bimonthly, so how you get to eight, I don't know. So, because we go up to the end of the year. There is no change here.
Councillor French.
I think the point was that get rid of the flood committee, which meets four times, right? Absorb it into environment. You're not changing how many times environment meets, you're putting flood into environment, which meets eight times a year. I don't think the promise was that we're going to increase environment meetings.
I mean, I think we need to look at the recording. My clear relation was, there was a commitment to increase the frequency of it. And I think we, I'll park it there Chairman, but I do think we just need to look at that. And obviously, the executive will presumably, does this paper go to executive? I don't know, it does, doesn't it?
Okay.
So, no, it doesn't normally go to executive in terms of the working paper, but I will provide a written response to you.
So do we all agree with the work programme? All those in favour? All those against? I believe that's passed. Item 15, consideration of exemption information. As the next item on the agenda includes what local government law refers to an exempt information, there is a proposal to exclude members of the public and press from the meeting for the consideration of this item. I thus move that in accordance with section 100A4 of the Local Government Act 1972, that the public and press be excluded from the meeting for agenda. Item 16, on the grounds that it involves likely disclosure of exempt information, as defined in paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. Do I have a second there? Kane? Those in favour? Those against? Those abstentions? Therefore, I believe we will go to closed session. So we'll pause.